Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 21st, regular meeting of the Stafford County School Board. It is seven o'clock this evening. We are meeting in the Board of Supervisors chambers at 1300 Courthouse Road in Stafford. Going to do our call to order. I'm going to ask each of our board members, as usual, just to go down, introduce them, say that they are here and the district that they represent. I'll start to my left.
Dr. Chase, Falmouth District.
Dr. Warner, Griffiths-Widewater.
Holly Hazard-Hartwood District.
Pamela Young, DeGarrisonville District.
Irene Hollerback, the Acquired District.
Susan Randall, George Washington District.
Tricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
We have a full quorum tonight. All seven members are present. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendment. Due to the number of items that are on the agenda, that we would like to limit public comments to no more than two hours.
Second.
Excuse me, moved and seconded for approval of the agenda with the amendment of limitation of two hours for public comment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our first item on the agenda is our staff report, which is an update from our Office of Equity and Accountability. So, we will start there. I will turn it to Dr. Kistner and his staff.
So, I am hoping that Roxanna is upstairs from the ABC room presenting this.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay. So, she should appear on some screen.
I am right here, sir. Can you hear me?
Oh.
Okay, so, next slide, please.
Okay, so, we got to get the slides right. There's no slide. Oh, now it is perfect.
My name is Roxanna Vandez, and I am the Director of Equity for Stafford County Public Schools, as we know. Dr. Kistner has asked me to give a report, a quick report, on what we have been up to this almost year since we set up the office.
She needs to talk louder.
Next slide.
Roxanna.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. Is any way, well, two things. I think you could actually, could she come down here?
Yes.
I think you could come down here. There's really not that many people in the room.
Yes, sir.
And it's a little difficult to hear.
I'm on my way.
Okay, thank you.
So, what we're going to do is, we're going to wait for Roxanna to join us. Also, just to note, the rumbling is not anybody's stomach or anything. There does seem to be a storm going on outside as well. So, we also thought, in order to hear her more clearly, so she is not competing with the storm outside, we're going to have her come on into the chambers so that she can present from the dais.
I knew you was a sprinter when you were young.
And if you would just start from the beginning for us. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Roxanna Vandez, and I am the Equity Director for Stafford County Public Schools, as most of you know.
Is it on?
And Dr. Kistner has asked if I would provide an equity update on what we have been doing for this past year. So, can I control the slides from here?
Is your mic on?
Is the mic on?
Yeah.
I'll get closer to it then. That's not my...
We could see yours.
Oh, next.
Yeah.
Computer? They told me that the laptop is not working. Okay, well, we'll go by what they have.
Roxanne, can you see the slides? They're on the screen. They're not.
They're not.
But not on the screen.
Okay, can you go back a couple of slides, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, under the Office of Accountability, of Equity and Accountability, we have federal grants, accountability when it comes to SOL testing, Maquinitento, which is for homeless students, family engagement, and the EL Wellcome Center. Next. So, these are some of the efforts that we have been doing this past year, which include, as you know, restorative practice, because I presented on that last week, implicit bias, Equity PD through the National Equity Project, the training that we did for all staff on LGBTQIA, and the gender support plan, generation of it. We did equity, we are doing equity roundtables right now for leadership. A couple of you guys have attended, and those are ongoing. They're twice a month, and right now, they're for central office and school leadership, and it will be brought to the teachers and staff in the buildings, too. The KJIT program was started by our office over a year ago. The family engagement training that we have provided for schools and for principals in the National Equity Project, that we've had them come and speak to our leadership. And we had an equity audit that was done last year, that we are waiting on the results to develop our equity plan. Next, please.
I just want to quickly mention that we initiated the equity audit. We contacted the Department of Education, and we had a firm out of Texas.
Yes.
Which I'm glad we did. Most people get an equity audit after there's an equity concern raised. So, we went ahead and said, let's initiate it, be a little more proactive instead of reactive.
And you know what, Dr. Kistner? I'm glad that you brought that up, because one of the things that we truly appreciate from the Office of Equity is that Dr. Kistner has brought it to the forefront of everything going on since he got here, and that's why the office was established to begin with, and we have been cooperating to try and bring equity to every single part of our school system. So, the collaboration with other departments, we cannot do this work ourselves, and those are just some of the things that we have done with other departments, including, of course, our Law Department, Student Services, Instruction, and HR. And I can give you more details if you want at some point, but I did not want to hold you. Please, next. And we brought a couple of speakers that were here this year, which included Matt Cage, Charlene Green, and Misha Mosley, all experts on their field, and they are part of a speaker series. It's not just a one and done, because this has to become part of who we are and what we are. Next. So, what comes next? We are using the equity audit. When they give us all the results, we have gotten a quick summary of it, but until they get into the office in Texas, and they're not allowed in yet, they're going to send us the full report. But the framework that we are going to be working on is going to include all stakeholders, and the EDOC Committee that you're familiar with is going to participate and help us with this. Now, up there, can I do the next one, please? So, we have a few, they say they're goals, but they really are more topics right now, because a goal includes a measurement, and we definitely have to measure it, because if we do not measure it, we are not going to know how effective it is. But the first one is raising the level of consciousness, bringing up literacy about equity, what it means, how it is, using the same vocabulary, so we can all start at the same point. Next, please. Number two is developing equity goals, strategies, priorities across all SPCS programs, not just the Office of Equity, but across the whole county. Next. Okay, so, our curriculum. Our curriculum, we need to review it and modify it for culturally sustaining pedagogy, and not only for culturally sustaining pedagogy, you know, that is accessible to all, but also to make sure that it is embedded throughout, represented of the different cultures and the different peoples that we have in our school systems. And that history is presented the way that it happened versus the way that it's presented in general. Next, please. With HR, we are going to work on and have been working with recruiting, hiring, and retaining diverse staff that is representative of the population that SPCS has. As we know, it is very important for our kids to have somebody that looks like them, that can relate to them, teaching them and reaching out to them. Professional development. Professional development is key for everybody. I'm standing here as the Equity Officer, but I don't know it all. I still need PD myself in certain areas that I don't know much about, and I think we're all in a... My English is going right now. I'm nervous. We're all in accord that it's very important, it's key to everything we do, to provide the teachers, to provide the staff, to provide leadership with the tools that they need in order to be able to implement this correctly, and to have equity become part of everyday life. Next. To create and foster a supportive, inclusive climate for all students and staff, including, you know, what we're doing with restorative justice, and different things like that that will encompass. These are just broad subjects. Next. I have two more, Dr. Kistner. Support and ensure authentic family engagement. Our families, our families, we know are very important and are key to have them in and become real and true advocates of their kids' schooling. So, it is very important that we have the families, that the teachers get to know their families, and that we help the teachers in achieving that. Next. And the last one is equitable educational opportunities in school and elimination of the opportunity gaps. Not only do we want to eliminate the opportunity gaps, but we also need to put the steps necessary and the supports necessary for the achievement of all children. Next. These are our speakers that were supposed to come for our equity conferences here, and we're going to have them come as part of the training that we're doing, and each one of them is part of something bigger that we're doing. Like I said before, not wanting to be done with it. Next. And the last note is, for equity to become a central component, like I've said, we need people at the schools to be doing it, the principals, the teachers, and everybody. So, to help in that effort, we are going to establish, train, and support an equity leader at each school to help us not only with the equity framework, but with carrying out PD and doing this work from in-house, so it becomes part of who we are. And that's it, I believe. Questions?
All right. Any questions? Ms. Randall, start us off.
You showed us the names of the speakers that would be normally coming to your virtual conference, or your in-person conference. Will you then now be switching that to virtual? And if so, when will these begin?
Yes. This was for this year, and we postponed that at the very beginning, because it was supposed to be right now, a couple of weeks ago. So, we're hoping to do it next year, in June or July. We have not decided the dates yet. I need to see the availability and that it matches what we...
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Yes, Ms. Young.
So, you're lucky. If you're wondering what I was looking for, I had a list of questions, and I must have left it at my dining room table. But one of the things I did notice when I was looking through everything, it all looked good and sounded good, and we're on the right track. And thank you so much, Dr. Kistner, for putting my vision and the plans that you're working with, so I, the dedication and time that the Equity Department has been putting, this is fabulous, and I could see it at work. And so, I thank you, and thank you all for your hard work. I spent this past summer with Roxanne's employees, sharing not only food to members, but also learning materials. So, equity, you know, I'm the equity woman here. I miss Dwayne. He would always say, before I could even say anything, he would just mumble equity. So, that is mostly on the forefront of my mind. I wanted to know what the plan for now, some of the things, one of the things that I noted down on my page, was that a lot of the work was post-COVID. And so, I'm wondering, how much of this, and how are you going to do the professional development, and all the things that we've had in mind as planning throughout the year? What can we get done? And so, do you have a new plan, or are you going to try to continue at what I read?
No, a lot of the stuff that we had started will continue. You know, such as the restorative justice, Lawd works really hard with the equity, not equity, the pedagogy, the equity pedagogy. And we are, during the first three weeks, that we're going to have teachers, that we're going to be training teachers on, you know, the online and everything that we need to get them ready, including health and all the different things that we're going to do, we have equity and social, emotional learning built in there to begin with, and then it's going to be embedded throughout the months. It's, it has become part of it, which is, you know...
Yeah.
Which is what we needed to do.
And so, one of the other questions I had was this, having that pedagogy is important. I wanted to know how we were planning on starting to look at the books, to see how we are going to integrate what we've already learned, like, from what area are we looking at? Is it civics? Is it history? Is it elementary? And if you don't know the answers, it's okay. You know, we could get that in the next round, but I was just wondering.
Yeah, and I can get you more details, but we are looking at them from different aspects. We're looking at it from everything, from how does the data play, the data play into, you know, not only discipline, but in the classes. There's an African-American history course that VDOE either is putting out this coming week, or has already put out, that can be offered in our schools as soon as we adopt it, which, you know, it takes, it's a year process. The Lawd, a facilitator for history, is collaborating with other counties a little bit north of us, and they are revamping, and they're putting together different modules for teaching history, updated history, as we call it, not revisionist history, but updated true history. And we're going to look at those and see about implementing those. Also, Dr. Kistner, one of the things that he asked me to look at is civics course that kids are going to have to go through. They're going to get modules at each level, and then it's going to be, hopefully, a required course in eighth grade, by the time they graduate from eighth grade. When it's going to happen, hopefully, the sooner the better, but obviously, right now, under what we are in, we're going to do the best that we can to get the everyday...
And this is not a correction on what you just said, but you, more than anybody knows, that African-American is not the only thing that I'm... So, Hispanics and Indians and all the history, because I'm all of that, right?
Absolutely.
What you see is one thing, but what I am is another, so I'm about all cultures being expressed in history. So, I thank you for that.
And that's part of the culturally relevant pedagogy that we're going to implement. One of the things, and if I may just read this, is the culturally sustaining pedagogy, which is what we want to look at, describes teaching and learning that seeks to perpetuate and foster linguistic and cultural pluralism as part of the democratic project of schooling as a needed response to demographic and social change. We at SPCS are going to seek that cultural and linguistic dexterity and its outcome of learning is seen as an asset. It is seen as critically enriching and bringing strength rather than replacing deficits, which is how it's often looked at. So...
Thank you for asking that. I had forgotten about that.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Hollerback?
No, but I just want to bring it to the attention of IT, that I don't think any of us are any longer connected, so we can't access our internal agenda items.
If you could come back up, I'm going to consider checking.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Dr. Chase?
I just wanted to say thank you for spearheading this and keeping this initiative going, and I just want to say, I hope that we don't let COVID-19 and all the craziness of this coming year take away the momentum. So, thank you.
I will not thank you. I appreciate all your support and look forward to working with you guys.
I do also want you to know that Roxanne is recognized at the state level. She was asked to co-chair the State Equity Task Force to Return to School, so she did a remarkably phenomenal job, so, thank you.
Don't run away. Don't run away. So, I was also going to say that, but there's just a couple of things. I know that also, her expertise has been sought out on the Board of Supervisor's side with some of the committees, that they are in the process of putting together, and I hope that, certainly, that the School Division remains a part of that conversation, but I know that we have a great resource in you, and I appreciate, I know that you went over and helped tell them what we were doing. So, I just want to say that. But I do hope that we make sure that it's a broad discussion. I want you to go, but I also think Board members and other staff needs to go, because I think the broader we make the discussion, the broader our impact as well. From, I know something that Dr. Kistner has talked a lot about is the Equity Dashboard, and that's something I don't know if you or he would like to address, and I, and again, I do understand we have some, but I know that's been something we've really, really talked about, and so I just hope, even if it's not tonight, but that we sort of get an update on either what's needed to help that, or what we need to do.
Yes, no, absolutely. We'll give you an update. Going back to the thing of us working with the local government, we are, we are become, we have become, I came to present to them, and I'm going to be coming to their meetings of their ad hoc committee, and so that we can keep on communicating and working together. Like you said, we need something broader. When it comes to the Equity Dashboard, it's Who Knew It, and we will be happy to give you a report on that and how that's going at the next one.
I just have a real quick question. In your committee meetings, do you guys take minutes? Do you keep minutes?
In the EDOC, the EDOC Committee, or the one here?
The one here.
Okay, that was the first one where I presented at, but yes, they do keep minutes.
Okay. Where can we find those if we were interested?
I will get that information to you.
And at the state?
And I am at the, oh, at the state level? I will give you all that information. I can get that for you. It's very easy.
Okay. I'm just thinking if we just add it to the website.
Yeah, it's right on the website. We'll send everybody the link of her report.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Yes.
No, but I will definitely do that. So... Dr. Kistner, may I ask Roxanne a question?
No, I'm not saying anything.
You're just watching me, so I'm watching you back.
I thought you already spoke. I'm sorry.
So, what are you trying to say? Roxanne, earlier today, you know, we had a meeting about, and I don't know if you can answer this question, you don't, if you don't know, then that's fine, but we were talking about SROs and the school systems and equity, and I was wondering if there is a program that you could recommend that we could join together, SPCS, and, you know, the SRO system to help them integrate a little bit better, and how they provide support for the minorities.
Absolutely. Yeah, we would be happy and welcome to have them come to our trainings and be part of it, and also to help them get more involved in the schools. I would love to be part of that, to help them.
Okay.
Because we have trainings all the time, and they can attend any of them, because it will apply to them just as well, because they're in our schools.
Yeah, because that cultural responsiveness is something very important. It's different than cultural diversity.
Especially as our population is changing.
Yeah.
In order for them to be able to keep up with it and supply them with the tools that they need, and the scaffolded resources that they need in order to do that, absolutely.
So, we certainly remember to invite you to our next meeting. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Okay.
It should be part of everything, so, you know, as Dr. Kistner says and reminds us all the time, so thank you.
So, I feel like you guys are talking about them. It's okay.
I would just like to remind Board members, I believe it came from Roxanna, about opportunities about equity. I appreciate you sending it, because, so, I appreciate that. Continue to just send that to us, or to the clerk, for us to know. I would like to also let the Board know that I have reached out to Charlene Green to see if she can do something for the Board. I haven't had, we haven't had a chance to sort of connect, but I have sent an email to her saying our desire to meet with her, so that is at least out there to see if we can...
Chairwoman Holly, you're just melting my heart. I don't even know what to say. Like, this is just, it's just, it's work, I mean, I'm excited. Like, it's just working out.
I haven't gotten a date yet, so, so hang tight. But I did sort of say September, October, so just so you all know, I was not overly ambitious about August. I thought we might have a few other things going on, but I had, I did request a evening or some, just so that we can all make sure, we can maybe have dinner with her, even if she is not physically with us, so...
And you guys are always welcome to participate in the monthly equity talks that we have.
Okay. And then, just a final, and this is just something to throw out, because there are, as we know, our students are readers. I know our librarians are some of the most amazing people I love. I don't know if they would like to or might consider, I know there's so many things going on, sort of a great reading list, books for kids. We could maybe even run something, you know, like that, of just some really great books in some different areas that may not be covered in the ninth, 10th, I mean, believe me, I read a variety of things, and I was just thinking, why not maybe, you know, just something to think about, because there are kids who love to read and may say, gosh, I'd like to read. So, I'm just throwing that out. I know there's, it's been talked about, but maybe just an idea.
No, I appreciate it. We're revamping the Equity website, and part of what somebody had suggested was to have something, so I love that idea, and I had honestly forgotten about that part, so, yes, we will definitely include that, though. Thank you.
It's just one more resource, and especially with the learning model, whatever is selected tonight, giving additional opportunities that may or may not be with right within the curriculum, but as you said, if you want it to be an underpinning for all that we do, maybe we also offer those as possible reading, and also to say to our parents, maybe this is something you'd like to read together as a family, because we used to read certain books together and then discuss them. There were very different insights, I have to say, on some of those books.
No pun intended. I feel so whole. I said, no pun intended, I feel so whole.
If I could just say one thing. Couple of months ago, probably almost many months ago, a team of us, and I believe Dr. Chase attended, we went down to Fredericksburg, and there was an Equity Conference, and one thing that we learned, that there are certain school boards that have an Equity template that they use when they're about to adopt a policy. And I know Charlottesville was one of them that spoke about it, so I'll research it for you, and it might be something you may be interested in.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we're looking at under the policies. So, those things that you saw, the broad categories that you saw, please, if you take the time and look at them, and you ask me any questions, obviously not right now, we have other stuff to do, but please feel free to send me your questions and suggestions, because that's what it's all about, the more input, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Our next item on the agenda, which is always in this spot, is our COVID-19 update, which is presented by Dr. Kistner. So, Dr. Kistner, you're on.
Thank you very much. So, just a couple of quick comments. I've been stating, I think, really, all of us have been stating, that navigating COVID-19 is, the only thing is certain that is uncertain. And the School Board was, has been, and remains supportive to the superintendent, and last week, you, I don't know if you used the word adopt, I forget what word you used, but you accepted, endorsed my recommendations, and I appreciate that. And we reached out to parents, and we reached out to staff, and we asked parents to make a commitment, and in many ways, I recognize that the commitment we've asked them to make, I'm now asking them to delay that commitment. But the delay is because, as I reflect on this daily, pretty much all day long, and talk to people, listen to people, read the many emails that you have received, and phone calls, and so on, I've been pretty consistent in all my messaging that goal one was going to be the primary goal. And as Roxanne just spoke, the struggle in this plan that I'm proposing is an acknowledgement that we do have children in Stafford, that all children need to be in school, but there's a group of children that need to be in a place called a classroom in front of a teacher. And I don't lose sight of that. But what I do focus on and see as a priority is that child and that teacher that's in front of that child, their ability to stay healthy. child, their ability to stay healthy, and there's no guarantees, I'll be the first one to say, there's no guarantees, that, that to me becomes a priority in my recommendation to the board. So goal one and goal two, I don't need to read it to you, you saw this last time, it has not changed. Now, why is this so challenging? There's understandable anxiety about health risks for adults and children. Every day, all day long, you could pick whatever cable channel you watch, whatever newspaper you read, whatever conversation you have, there's great uncertainty about what this COVID-19 really means, and I want to be specific, I don't see anything in any readings, and you may read something different, where we could conclusively make a statement, how this virus will be in a school setting, we could talk about it in other settings, but schools have not been open in the United States, I know there's a desire at times to compare to other countries, but other countries have addressed the COVID-19 in different ways, although most recently, if we want to look at other countries, you did read about South Korea and Israel, which I would say did not have a positive story when it came to COVID-19. There's understandable anxiety about lost instructional time and learning, absolutely. Lack of clarity and inconsistent messaging, and this is at every level, not the local level, from political leaders and health experts. One day, we get a report, and I don't mind mentioning the association, American Academy of Pediatrics, send them back to school, just do this, do that, kids will be safe. One week later, we get another report, however, you need to consider the following, and that messaging also causes anxiety because we're not really sure. I already mentioned the media, I already mentioned social media, there's a lot of information that's out there, sometimes it's not accurate, sometimes it's accurate. There's no question, in the last 72 hours, the last week, today, I read in the Washington Post right before this meeting, three school systems north of us are doing, having the same conversation we're having, a plan was put forward, another plan is now being forward. And you already know, last week, I spoke to many of you, we saw the school system to the north of us and a school system to the south, I'm not going to say that's the driving decision, but I'm not dismissive that that is a factor. As already stated, I have not, I listened to the Fairfax School Board today, I've listened to the Chesterfield School Board, I listened to the Prince William County School Board, I've listened to the Spotsylvania County School Board, I know a lot about school boards, and when I heard the Fairfax Health Department speak, when they were asked point blank, can we open school, they would not answer one way or another, except to say we could share what today's data is and what yesterday's data is, but we can't unequivocally tell you what it will be when you open up after Labor Day. Did state that there's a four to six week trail with some of the data, which would bring us to our opening school. As already indicated, we spoke to Dr. Stern again today, there will be a data dashboard for every community, that, that data dashboard has not been developed yet, I spoke about this last week, it will determine low, moderate, and high-risk communities. There's, as already stated, virtual learning and equity concerns, although I need to say this, I know we're going to be a lot better than in the spring, I know we'll be a lot better in August, and I'll know we'll be a lot better in September and October moving forward. This is all very new, and answers are not clear as we would like it, and I do respect everybody's, everybody's opinion, many people who might be watching know, like yourselves, I have reached out and spoke to them, and have responded to almost every email that I received, the last 72 hours that became a little bit more challenging, and what I do acknowledge, there are very strong and diverse beliefs in Stafford, which honestly is not unique, it's true in every community, but we're speaking about Stafford schools. So this is from the CDC, Center for Disease Control, you've seen this numerous times before, the lowest risk is the virtual-only classes, activities, and events, the highest risk is the full-size in-person class activities, no social distancing, pretty much how school was before March 12th, and the more risk, what I would think would be closer to the hybrid model that we looked at last week and you endorsed. I want to address this issue right away, because I know this issue became a, an issue for many people, as you see or in your email, and I will just state that you guys accepted the recommendation I put forward, and the recommendation I put forward was the CDC recommendation, so I want to make that clear, okay? And I also want to make it clear, as we've talked about, they make recommendations, and you have the authority at any time to go above the recommendation or below the recommendation. And I think even in the last week and 10 days, there's been much greater acceptance that masks, face coverings do count, that this is a critical way of stopping the spread. So I want to, in a sense, amend what you saw last week, and be very clear what I believe should be the expectation for anyone who enters our school facilities. Students, staff, and visitors will be required to wear face coverings at all times in all schools, classrooms, buses, and facilities, as developmentally appropriate unless exempt due to a medical condition. The rest of the language, well, the next two paragraphs, this was what you saw before, but according to the CDC, cloth face covering should not be placed on children under age two, anyone who has trouble breathing, anyone who's unconscious or incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. Employees who work in individual offices and areas may remove the face mask when they are alone, and when appropriate, face shields will be utilized by staff and/or students to meet student and staff needs. There will be times where a mask, as I'm demonstrating now, is difficult to speak, and, but a protection when you're definitely not within, you're definitely not able to do the six feet, where you're concerned that it may start off at six feet, but based on the children, that the six feet radius will be, in a sense, violated. So when appropriate, face shields will be utilized by staff and students to meet student and staff needs, and there are certain children that need to see the, the face of, of its staff. So again, you saw this, this is from a document that the American Academy of Pediatrics put out, schools must be flexible, this is actually their latest document that I was speaking about, it's not the original document, school policies must be flexible and nimble in responding to new information, and administrators must be willing to refine approaches when specific policies are not working, and then the, I won't read the next part, but you saw this, and the public has this on our website. So going back to July 14th, a week ago, this is what, was the factors at that time, and I want to make it clear, and I know I've spoken to most of you in the last 48 hours, many of you today, and, you know, I've been asked a lot of questions, and some of them are hypothetical, some of them, there is no clear answer, and some of the questions or comments have been made, you know, once we go on virtual, it's going to be very hard not to go on virtual, what's really going to change, and that's a very, very fair question, but I would just say, what will change will be, hopefully the data will give us some directionality, and right now, we lack that directionality, because we don't have the data to know how COVID-19 impacts both students and adults in a school setting. We do have some at an international level, but I don't see anything at the national level. So again, these areas right here still remain in effect, but it remains in greater effect when we could transition, because there will be a when, okay? There will be a when. I'm not going to tell you when that's going to be, because I don't know, but there will be a time we will be back in our schools, and that is obviously is the goal, but it's my goal to do it when there's a greater understanding of the health risk. So fact is driving the amended recommendation on July 21st. So as we learn, as we experience, we realize, and, and so a question that Dr. Chase asked last week, which is a great question, will all your classrooms really be six feet apart? And the answer is, many times, but sometimes not. So we have discussed that, and I, visiting a middle school, is that we could put a chair by a table that would block, it's hard to explain the way I'm explaining, but it's a five-foot table, and if two children are sitting at the table, they're only going to be five feet apart, but if we put a chair, and a student has to sit on the, if your feet sit on the other side of the chair, then all of a sudden, the child is six feet apart. That's just an example. North Stafford High School, I would recommend, Gale Middle School, I would recommend, if you want to see schools that are maybe ahead of others, I'm sure there's others, those are two that I'm most aware of, that have been creating social distancing environments. We need to provide time to assess the COVID-19 on children and adults in a school setting. Again, I, I just don't see anything, I don't believe there is anything that gives me comfort to suggest that so many children should be back in school. Provided targeted FF, F, face-to-face instruction for certain students based on individual needs, and I'll go over that in much greater detail a little later. Staff needs, again, time to maximize mitigation strategies, provide the time necessary to assess COVID-19 impact on children and adults, and it's a reality, regardless of what our thoughts are on this, that this is an unexpected financial burden for many of our staff, employees, and as I already stated at the Fab meeting, we are looking at costs that, for some people, it may really put them in a position to decide, is it something, is, should I stay at home and be a full-time mom and dad, or should I pay the childcare? And just to digress real quickly, there are many companies that provide childcare for their employees, okay, some universities, hospitals, so it actually is a really, really good benefit, as we talk about recruiting, but I just want to get back on track, so I don't see it as something, I only see it as something to help support our staff, and, and I, I hope we will have that, that discussion. Health assessment, again, provide the time necessary to assess COVID-19 local and state health data to determine any trends that might impact our plans. What we know, a few weeks ago, Virginia was identified as one of the states where the health data was going down, the COVID cases were going down. Now Virginia doesn't make that list, it's now on the list of COVID cases going up, and we may say, well, that's only because of the Hampton Roads area. Couple of weeks ago, we were saying South Side and Southwest Virginia were fine, it was Northern Virginia that was the problem. The problem is this COVID-19 doesn't care where you live, they don't go by zip codes, they don't go by street addresses. So as Virginia goes up, and you see what's happening at the national level, I'm not confident, and nor do I feel comfortable, to put people in a situation where the risk is really not known. Will there be risk regardless? Yes. We need to also be honest about that, there is no cure for COVID-19 right now, there is no vaccination, but to increase the risk is a concern. Fiscal responsibility, honor contractual obligations, adhere to the division budget, and then, we had this conversation last week, and we had this conversation at the Fab meeting, obtain a commitment from the county to fund all COVID-19-related costs to support a hybrid and virtual model. So one of the things that I need to tell you, and I know some of you, and I appreciate this, are reaching out and talking to principals, but we have a situation when teachers are identified as a candidate for virtual teaching because they have a health risk, and we take them out of the classroom, in many cases, we need to replace that teacher in the classroom. It doesn't work cleanly that we have this many families that are seeking 100% virtual, and that teacher now could lessen their caseload, or we could reduce a teacher. Additional personnel is something that I know many school systems are pursuing, I know it as a fact, and then mitigation strategies, we, we need to constantly look at, you heard Mr. Anderson last week speak about some of his concerns about our physical plants, and as I already indicated, that local school board return to school plan statewide, there is a significant movement towards virtual 100, 100% virtual, and I said this, and maybe I shouldn't have said it, because I heard some school systems took my words, and, and that might have helped motivate their decision, but I said last week, I did not want us to be the school system people learn from, and I still feel like that, and if you watch the Spotsylvania School Board meeting, they made that statement. We're hearing that other school systems don't want to be the ones, and they actually used the word, I believe, maybe I'm wrong, guinea pig, I don't want our school system to be that school system, when everybody else around us has chosen to close. Is that the main, is that the main reason? No, but it is a factor. I mentioned already, this, the Fab saw this last week, it's amended, because our best estimates at this point, the numbers do change when we go from a hybrid, these are annual costs, just to realize that these are all-year costs, so we do see a reduction. I do want to point out the supplemental nutrition fund balance, one, I mean, I'll answer any of these, but the supplemental nutrition fund balance, they count on paid meals, and if there's no kids in school, or less kids in school, then paid meals are reduced, okay? So, and then I will tell you, we did learn today, which is unfortunate, so every Tuesday morning, I have a superintendent's meeting, that we were able, up to, up to September 1, we could continue feeding everyone, people came to our food sites, we fed them. Our reimbursement now will just be for free to reduce lunch, children, okay, after September Okay, continued improvement and evaluation of our plan, again, I mentioned it last week, I want to mention it again, every time you call Dr. Stern, he's willing to have the conversation. Research and data on COVID-19 in a public school setting, this is an added one, number of times a class, school, or division closes due to COVID-19, we'll still have people in our schools, so you might be saying, well, how's this? I'm not saying it by any means shutting down our schools, it's just reducing the number of people in our schools. We did learn something today about average daily membership and attendance, the state Friday will come out with a memo, they're not, at this point, the state superintendent does not have the authority, what superintendents were hoping, or at least superintendents in school systems like Stafford, where we would see projecting an increased ADM, we were hoping that they would take it based on what we built out budget, school systems that are losing children, they're hoping that it would just be harmless, that whatever you got last year, you will get this year, the only thing that he said, he doesn't have the authority, that would be general... The only thing that he said, he doesn't have the authority, that would be general assembly action to make that, but for attendance purposes. And here are some of the examples. Logs, phone calls, I mentioned that some of our programs, when you log in, there's going to be amazing flexibility on how you take attendance for children, which is driven, which drives our attendance, which drives our ADM. Student progress monitoring, a task or a project, project-based, okay? Staff engagement, staff and parent survey to evaluate effectiveness. And this, I'll show you this in a little bit. So the calendar, I'm not recommending any changes. This is what you saw last time. Staff report August 3, existing staff the 10th. Instructional calendar begins August 31. You'll see a little variation for preschool, but they don't fall under the same requirements of K-12. And again, the calendar ends at 16th graduation of 12. So preschool, I kind of feel like with the preschool population, you really have to individualize, you've got to customize the approach. And what I am proposing is that during the weeks of August 24th and 31st, staff will collaborate among themselves and with parents to discuss instructional delivery model options appropriate for preschool children. And then what those models will go into effect, September 8, which is the Tuesday following Labor Day. And some of the options could include face-to-face instruction, that could be a few days a week, one day a week, two days a week, more than two days a week. Home visit instruction, I've worked in school systems where we would send people to the homes to support children. Again, we would look at all the health issues. Virtual instruction, some home learning packages. And I will tell you, even at the early childhood, there's anxiety. We invited eight families for summer, four accepted it, okay? It might have been not solely because of COVID-19, but it wasn't like we were having outdoors knock on to have more people in the summer program. And then, of course, medical or parental exemptions would be honored. So I want to hopefully appreciate the complexity of what we're trying to do, is that we're trying to align our models, so if we, I'm going to say when we, go back to hybrid, there will be a seamless transition, and those kids who have chosen, those families that chose the hybrid, face-to-face, and those who chose the remote, their learning will continue, okay? It'll continue where they, where they ended, okay? When we change. So to maintain the same schedule regardless of fluctuations in health conditions, design of division-wide instructional model to move seamlessly from virtual to hybrid. And, no, I've heard this comment, not from board members, but I've heard this comment, well, why don't we wait till we have to shut down? I don't want to wait till we have to shut down. Because if we wait till we have to shut down, I believe when we open, we will have to shut down. But if we're waiting till we shut down, then what we are willing to say is, we are waiting to somebody to be tested positive. And, you know, I hear different people say, well, children are low-risk, and that's true, lower risk, not no risk. And I don't know what the number is. If it's 1%, that's 300 children. If it's a half a percent, that's 150 children. If it's a quarter of a percent, that's 75 children. So I'm not, I'm not going high. I started at one, and I ended at a quarter. And I'm not sure, I know I'm not comfortable saying to 75, 150, or 300 children, we were waiting to somebody tested positive before we closed your classroom. And that holds true for the adults also. The adults are a much higher risk than our students. Allow students and families to stay connected with peers, a teacher in their school, maintain same pacing for all students, all student learning with flexibility for differentiation. We have moved very quickly to having our staff be the responsible staff for the virtual learning. So let's talk a little bit about these different models. 100% virtual instruction for all students, this is elementary, from August 31 to October 1, except those in the exempt categories. And I'll just go to that right now. Children through the IEP, those are children with disabilities. English learned at levels one and two. Level one is basically children that are new to our country, or they're children that speak basically no English. Level two, you have a little higher level of proficiency. Other students are determined by building principals. There might be a situation where a building principal says, I have children who need more tier-three intervention. I have staff, and we have kindergarten students, and I would like to start pilot a kindergarten class. I don't want to necessarily say no. I want this to be a building-based discussion, and a building-based discussion that they could have with their parents also. And in Stafford, we know that there are certain areas, and I anticipate the question Jay's willing, will be answering it, that we have weak or basically no internet connectivity. And I think Dr. Chase, if somebody asks even about high-speed connectivity. So I see a great possibility of our schools being used for those children. We don't, I don't want children in parking lots with their parents in a car trying to get a hotspot. That's not how learning should take place. Again, this is just an example, you ask for a sample schedule, you're going to get another document, maybe tomorrow, definitely before the week's over, that gives you a much more intent, it's an 18-page document that our folks put together to give you a better understanding of the virtual learning. But here, again, you have the synchronous days, you have the asynchronous days, this is a sample schedule, the key word is sample. Lot of the schedules, principals are responsible for the schedules in their school, okay? But you get a sense of the time shifts. Middle school, 100% virtual instruction for all students from August 31 to November 5. Again, the exempt categories are the same as the elementary. Health and academic data analysis will occur on October 26 to determine if the hybrid model, the 100% remote option should begin on November 11. I am not stating by any means, I want to make sure that's clear, that all of a sudden, November 5, it's over with, and we could come back to school. I'm just not saying that. And I don't think any school system is really saying that. We, using that date of November 5, because that's the end of the first grading period, all right? But we're going to look at the data that I already shared earlier to make a better decision if we're ready to start school on November 11. And again, if the board accepts this, on the 28th of October. I hope you also understand the, why am I asking you to do this now? If you, if four to six weeks, why can't we wait a couple of weeks? Yes, you could wait a couple of days, you could wait a couple of weeks. I would just share with you that to put 30,000 children, or closer to 30,000 children, on a virtual learning model, a hybrid was difficult enough, requires a lot of time to design and customize and deliver. High school, oh, here's a middle school schedule, again. High school, it's the same as the middle school, the exempt categories, there's an additional exempt categories, certain CTE and STAT courses would also be available for face-to-face instruction. And again, that would be principal working with the teachers and families to make that And again. All right, so we did a lot of surveys, and again, for the parents, I do thank you, some surveys. So we did see a trend the last week, we gave, we extended people's, well, let me get to that survey, but we did extend the survey, and we definitely saw a trend in the last few days. And so you know, before, if the board chooses to accept this, we are going to, again, before we start up again, couple of weeks, go ahead and survey parents again, to get a better sense of, now that they've experienced the virtual, now that they know more about the health data in our state and community, now that they know more about the masks, have their thoughts changed. But you see that the number-one concern was academic progress, and the number-two concern was the experience of social distancing. So then, parents return to school survey, the preference for virtual-only model, and again, about 35% of the parents indicated that they would take some level of virtual, it's hard for me to know if elementary people were speaking for high school and middle school ones, okay? But we could conclude at least that 65% at that time wanted the in-person instruction as much as possible. Then we just finished it last Friday, and we gave parents notice that they could change their mind, and their last, the way that our, our system allows, their last survey would be the one, so if you did one earlier and you change your mind, just do it again, and your last one will be the one that will count. What I was mentioning is that we did see, it's still 72%, but we did see the last week it go from 78 to 72 relatively quickly, but still, I would say significantly more. And again, there's a lot of, when I say parents, just so you know, these are children, okay? So many parents have more than one child, okay? Elementary, you see the breakdown. Middle school, you see the breakdown. High school, you see the breakdown. Okay, then we gave a survey out, a poll survey, and we gave different options, what, again, you could see that 60% of our staff, this is all staff, 60% of our staff preferred that school started after November 3. 22% wanted school to start as described last week, and 18% October 1, give us some time. So about 40% wanted school to start within a month of the date of August 31, and 60% wanted afterwards. So, okay, there is a slide that I'll send to you, it's not here, just to give you a breakdown of how many, 3,347 responded. There's another slide that didn't do it by category, but to give you an idea of what job responsibilities people had that reported, that responded. So I have to look at this positively, because I think that's the way we should look at it. Is there a lot of concerns? Absolutely. But there are ways of looking at this as positive also. So I've heard people say, I heard somebody today on TV saying that, you know, this is, this is another person that's giving their opinion, that this virus could be around for another two years. And, and what they were saying is that, you know, we all better learn to adapt to something really new, okay? And I believe that schools are being asked to move faster than the data is allowing to know what is right or wrong. But what I do know is that this experience will have our staff be much stronger in virtual instruction. Students will be provided greater flexibility and multimodal delivery models. Learning disruptions due to illness, long weather closing, and other potential disruptions will be minimized, because we'll be better prepared to move to a virtual learning. Greater potential for vertical and horizontal instruction. How often do you hear about a certain school, or a couple of schools, that don't have all the certified teachers they need, especially in certain subject areas, and maybe another school has that? Well, how about if we were able to set up classrooms and have teachers at another school be the lead teacher? How about professional development? Many things that Roxanne spoke about have been virtually. How about our meetings? We've been holding meetings. So there's, there's, I think, a way of reimagining how we do work. I've been talking to a lot of superintendents. Let's not just worry, let's not just focus on our schools, but how can we leverage this so we all benefit? So if there's a school system in South Side, or the Shandover Valley, or north of us, that have classes, so one school talked about how they have Chinese, we do not, okay? What if we were able to virtually have some of our students take Chinese? That was just an example. So I think there's some opportunities right there. So that is where I'm at. I feel very comfortable with the decision, recognizing that this is far from a perfect plan to support all children's academic needs, but I feel pretty confident in saying, it's a plan that greatly minimizes the chance that a child and adult will get sick. And that's where I finally landed on.
Okay, what I'm going to do now is, I am not going to have us do questions at this time, we're going to do that in the next section, so I would just say to board members to, for those who like to write like I do, just sort of start to pull your thoughts together for those watching as well. The board members received this today, if not even this afternoon, so we are still digesting this program, this recommendation. So just so that you all know, we do not have advance notice of what is being brought, even if we have talked to Dr. Kizner until we've seen it. So I know everybody's still chewing on that. So at this point, I'm going to move on to our citizen comments for this evening. At this time, I have four speakers that have, that have signed up. I'm going to go ahead, though, and read the invitation for tonight, and then I will call you all in order. Please remember, usually, you know how I am with efficiency, I like you all to line up tonight. Don't line up, stay in your seats, wait till the other person has completed their comments, whether they decide to leave the building or go to their seat, just observe those practices for those efficiency people like me, but take your time. So what I'm going to start off with is, tonight, individuals wishing to comment to the board may do so at this time. I'm going to ask that speakers shall identify themselves by name, and if you know it, your voting district. It's requested that you limit your comments to items on the agenda this evening, and if you can, announce the purpose or the topic of your comments. Tonight, we are limited to two minutes, shall be allotted to speakers. We did, we did as a board cap comments at two hours. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chair. And although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also use the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113. And I have one other comment. Actually, no, I think we will go with that. So I'm just going to go in order of those who signed up, just come forward. So I'm going to start off first with Dana Brown.
Can I take this off? Might hear me better. I'm Dana Brown, I live in Rock Hill District at 41 St. Williams Way, and I'm here to talk about back to school. Today, I took my daughter to the pediatrician for her checkup and to get some shots. The doctor shared with me that she felt very strongly kids should be back in the classroom. She felt that masks were a good idea, and three-foot social distancing was fine for kids under 10, but she really felt due to mental issues that she's been seeing an uptick of, they needed to be back. I feel it's time to go back to school as well. Last week, Dr. Kizner even stated very strongly, he felt the hybrid plan was best for Stafford. And I kind of remember the meeting a little differently, because I kind of remember him saying, it didn't matter what other divisions were doing, we could be leaders. And Ms. Healy wanted to wait until this week to make a decision. Dr. Dr. Kizner didn't, and he said his famous quote, "It's time to move on." And then 24 hours later, Spotsy votes didn't go the way they thought it was going to go, and now we want to, we want to flip-flop. We have 2,000 teachers in Stafford, thereabouts, and we have conflicting surveys because I think he said last week 110 needed an accommodation to teach online, which meant the majority wanted to go back to the classroom. I'm going to skip a little bit because I'm running out of time here. Last Thursday night, the Potomac Local did, they hosted a back-to-school town hall, and the head of our SEA was a panelist. When virtual school came up, 100% virtual, there were questions and concerns about paying a full salary to those employees who wouldn't be needed under all virtual scenarios. Our SEA felt that all Stafford County school employees could deliver instruction. He specifically said bus drivers could teach math. As generous as that sounds, I'm not sure that that's our best plan, and also don't think we should pay people not to work. So put everybody back to work and open the schools. Thank you.
Next, Christian Peabody from Falmouth. And of course, if you're representing an organization, you know the usual drill.
Oh, thank you. I'll save me a few seconds, Missy. All right. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Kizner. My name is Christian Peabody. I live at 121 Forest Avenue in Fredericksburg. I'm the elementary teacher at Falmouth, and I represent Stafford Education Association. This is my fourth straight hour wearing my mask, and we appreciate the risk we all taken to hold this public meeting, and I hope that's the word we keep in mind with this evening's work, is risk. In 1947, the Centralia Mining Disaster killed 111 coal miners due to preventable explosion that resulted from unenforced safety measures. And as the bodies were being recovered, scratchings were found on the mine walls saying, "Look in our pockets. We all have notes, give them to our wives." Seventy-three years later, we placed mining with education and that explosion with COVID-19, and we still risk preventable disaster that will involve deaths at this point. And instead of leaving notes in our pockets, our educators have been drafting their wills, and I know because I've been helping them with this. And in one of the wealthiest counties in the nation, if the division is having discussions on cutting stipends for staff, how is it going to be prepared to support those, our educators' families if they die? But we can mitigate that risk. We can, we can deliver an option that maximizes 100% safety for all, that mandates face coverings with reasonable exceptions like Dr. Kizner spoke about, that does prioritize high-targeted needs students, that honors the desires of staff to engage either in-person or virtually, that actually can prevent furloughs and also prevent deaths. And our children have no more important resource than the educators, and I know we all agree with that. And we have faith that the board can make this work. We have faith that we can come together like we have before, and we can secure the funding that we need to make this work as well. We have faith in you, and we have faith in Dr. Kizner's leadership to get this done. Thank you for everything.
Next, Mark Brokawski, Hartwood District.
Mark Brokawski, Hartwood District. We only get one shot at reopening our schools and need to get it right, or it will be difficult to open again. The implementation of a hybrid schedule can wait until we have the resources and plans to do it right. Those banging the drum to open schools, whether they are prepared or not, are essentially rolling the dice on a possible coronavirus blitzkrieg. The science is strong in the evidence of airborne and close-contact transmission. At a minimum, we need portable air cleaners with HEPA filtration and clean air delivery rates of 300 standard cubic feet per minute, and every classroom less than 1,000 square feet. We need to replace all filters with MERV 13 immediately. We need to increase outdoor air supply rates, decrease density, and increase physical distancing. Everyone needs to wear a face covering. How can we even still be debating this is beyond me. We don't need to be playing Russian roulette with our staff, students, and community. This isn't a game. We need to learn from other countries. Israel reopened without being fully prepared and saw 130 COVID-19 cases in one school alone. We must also understand that schools will look and function differently in a hybrid environment. There will be no gathering at the lunch tables, lunches will be eaten in classrooms, students will be limited to their own pods rather than being able to gather in groups for fun and learning. There won't be sharing of materials, there won't be any social events such as school dances, movie nights, field trips, et cetera. This is going to be a very stark and stressful for many students and staff. A hybrid environment is not a magic pill, and Corona is not a magic virus and is not going to go away if we ignore it. We are not certain whether the children will just be fine because whether it's long-term health consequences or even death, this has happened because of the virus. Why do we want to expose our children to something that we knew has this risk? And we know this is a risk for the adults that are working in the building. Do you want to come back in a few months' time and find a lot of us missing because we were not responsible and threw caution to the wind and allowed the virus to take over our schools and community? I hope not.
Next, I have Everett Obenheim, Rock Hill District.
My name is Everett Obenheim. I just have two questions, or two things there. My great-grandmother died during 1918 influenza, so I've been able to take this very seriously, change the course of my family's life. So follow up with what the gentleman just said here. I'm wondering if the air conditioners, due to a Harvard study, if the air conditioner's on the school and the bus and the central air, since we're seeing that that maybe that's spreading the disease, whether that should be turned off if we're not going to go all virtual. Second, my concern is, I live in a small house, my school is going to be my kitchen. I'm not a morning person, I'm a grumpy guy, things come out of my mouth. Do we plan on having the code of behavior in my house or code of conduct? And then, I guess I'm going to leave it there, because that's actually a concern of mine there. I don't, I don't want my daughter to suffer or my children to suffer because I speak the way that I speak in the morning. Thank you.
Those are the four speakers that I had signed up. I do see there are others in the, in our chambers. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If so, please go, come forward or stand up and make sure you don't have somebody else you're going to rush to the podium. Do we have any other speakers this evening? No? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody waving their hands or rushing forward. All right. If not, then I will go ahead and close public comment for this evening. I thank you for those who came this evening. And also, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to use the chambers until we have an acceptable and COVID-compliant, as I would call it, meeting space on the school side. So next, we'll move on to our board committee reports. We're going to start, and our one for this evening is our Finance and Budget Committee Report. Dr. Warner, if you want to start us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Fab C met on, the Finance and Budget Committee met on 7/16. New leadership was voted on. I was elected as committee chair. Mrs. Hollerback was voluntold as vice chair. The, we discussed the FY '22 budget calendar, which is on the agenda for tonight. This does align with the budget calendar for the Board of Supervisors, and the documents are included in, were included in today's agenda. I would like to point out that 8/17 is the deadline for forwarding, forwarding all the documentation and information sheets for our capital improvement projects. However, that does not reflect our prioritization of those projects. You will notice in your packets today, you received a SIP document, the capital improvement projects. Mr. White and Mr. Anderson have been working hard to create this document that clearly explains our capital improvement projects and offers more detail. The capital improvement projects will be presented for information on both 8/11 and 8/25 to allow us to evaluate and set our priorities. One item that was brought up by Ms. Healy was the idea that the day school is currently at capacity, and perhaps it was time for us to consider looking for an alternative site, which would then also free up classroom space for the Drew Middle School. We spent a good deal of time on COVID-19-related expenses and concerns, which obviously are going to depend on whatever model we're using. And one of the issues I think that is of great concern to all of us is the fact that even though our state funding currently, the lottery and the sales tax seem to be on track, we have no way of predicting what those might be in a few months. And we have no idea what additional COVID-related funding might be coming from the federal government. There was a discussion about the transfer of funds from our Health Benefits Plan, which I think we made in February or March, which seems like 100 years ago at this point. That funding was supposed to be transferred to the OPAB. That has not taken place, and as Ms. Healy brought up, we may want to hold on to that funding, and it may have to be used for further discussions about increased health costs related to COVID that we can't, we can't anticipate, or if we want to offer some premium support for teachers that are on a leave of absence. That will be added, we'd like to add that to the agenda for 8/11. Mr. Fulmer generated a preliminary document that highlighted the anticipated costs, but we do want to stress that there are a number of unknowns, the cleaning, the transportation. We will need additional counselor hours to try to get student schedules lined up and to help students and families. Face coverings, cleaning products, nutritional needs, as Dr. Kizner mentioned, the supplemental nutritional program. Mr. Anderson had given us an overview of the air handling and ventilation requirements. One thing that he had stressed was that the school would be flushing fresh air into the schools early before students arrived, and then flushing fresh air and again later in the afternoon, and that there was going to be an increase in the frequency of filter changes, but he did not anticipate that that would result in additional costs. As also previously mentioned, the ADM for the 2021 year school year is kind of in flux. We have no clear way of knowing how the state's going to recognize that. We also had a discussion on stipends, but we do not expect a final answer from the VHSL until 7/27. They are currently leaning towards Model 3, which is a condensed program, but I would like to say that if we switch to an all-virtual program, I think that we have to seriously consider whether we can have sports at all or other extracurricular activities. So the board, the Fab C had many of these discussions, and I think that these will be important considerations of the board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm sorry? Sure.
Thank you so much, Dr. Warner. I missed the Fab, but there was something that I had on the Fab the last time. I'm not sure if it's, it's still on there, that we may want to consider. I know we were calling it professional development, but now with COVID and everything, I, I think it's more like mental health, right? And so that should fall under, under health, this professional development with, you know, I'm trying to push this cultural responsiveness, and I'm thinking that's, that should be part of whatever funds we have that we could use instead of calling it professional development because it's part of mental health of individuals broadening their horizon in terms of accepting everybody as equal. I think that's, that's a challenge to, to try to just sell it as professional development, but just a thought.
All right. Any other questions or, Dr. Warner, have you all scheduled your next meeting?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I've asked Missy to send a calendar to try to figure out what a schedule would be, but obviously, we'll have to meet regularly with the new budget calendar coming up.
And I would just encourage board members, as you think of financial items, certainly share with the board, but make sure that those members of the committee are aware of anything that you think of as we move forward. All right, we have board member comments. I'm going to do what I usually don't do and say, who would like to go first this evening? All right. Ms. Hollerback, then, start us off.
So my two questions are, I'll start with the COVID stuff. Can we, as a board, draft a letter to our General Assembly members asking them to address in the, they're having a special session in August, to take up the issue of the ADM and have all of us sign it? And perhaps even ask our friends on the Board of Supervisors to draft their own in support of that request? That's number one. And then the number two is, the VSBA had sent us a statement that touched on racial injustice, and we attempted to sign it twice, and I think it was going to be edited or amended, and I'm just wondering where that is in the process.
I was just going to give some feedback to Ms. Hollerback, and then you could follow, but that was, that was me holding that up because I felt at that time when it was brought up that it wasn't ready and that we were not really serious about what we were thinking about, that it meant. And today, like I said earlier today, I feel better about our group and the work individually that I've, you've spoken to me about, what you have been doing, learning and studying, and, you know, just talking about these issues that you do understand that there was inequality and that it continues to be, and that you're willing to work towards that. So I'm willing to move it forward when you're ready.
Okay. Who would like to go next? I'm just taking the, oh, oh, no.
Oh, Delta, I thought someone was a question. Yes.
Keep going.
I'm not ready to go yet, but I'm just responding to that.
Okay. All right. Who wants to go next? Dr. Chase, thank you.
Yeah, sure. So I just wanted to say how important tonight for me is to come from a place of listening and taking in information. And it's really important to, for me, to try to be kind when I think about making this decision. One of the things that's really helped me, I think a lot of us dealing with COVID are feeling a sense of isolation. We have all been kind of in our homes, and we haven't seen each other, and people are communicating through social media or they're communicating through emails, and they're very impersonal, and it makes it very hard to really know what the person's intentions are or where exactly they're coming from. And so I'm really trying to work through that some. One of the things that's helped me with this feeling of isolation with this decision is this week getting out to some of the schools, and I'll be getting to more schools later this week and next week. I want to share that, that there actually are some children in school. That I was at Conway this morning, and I got to see two classrooms of English language learning students. Everybody was wearing a mask, and those children were so very, very happy to be there, and it was really lovely to see that. I don't know what decision we're going to make, but it was lovely to see that. It was nice to hear J.R. Raybolt talking about, he had worked with Cox to get high-speed internet, or I'm not sure their KJTs or exactly what it was, into Old Forge. And he had offered to use his Title I money to pay for that. I don't know whether he's had to use his Title I, he was still waiting to hear. I, I hope that other elementary school teachers who have similar issues, populations maybe, are trying to do similar kinds of things. I wanted to let Jay Cook know that he got really high marks for all of his work helping with Chromebooks and tech. I did hear that there's no ITRT for Head Start, so I, I hope that they're going to get some support if, if there's a plan for virtual instruction for any of those children. And then I just wanted to really thank a high school student out there by the name of Kiana, who really brought me a big laugh. She shared an email with all of us and, and told all of us that, yes, the haters are going to hate, and that brought me a, a good smile and helped given the, the number of emails that I've received over the last 72 hours. And I think that's everything that I've gotten.
Thank you. Dr. Warner, you want to go?
Yeah, you ready? I'll go next, if that's okay, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank all the people that have, have sent emails and have reached out. I understand that this is a really, really stressful time, and, you know, it may come as a shock to you, but we are all feeling the same stress. There's a lot of sleepless nights, there's a lot of waking up at 3:00 in the morning and agonizing over these decisions and worrying because we all feel very strongly about the health and safety of not only our students, but our faculty and our families. It is not, it, none of us take this lightly. I want to thank all the parents and teachers that have reached out to me, and I just want to say there is no consensus. I get parents who say, I get parents who say, I want my kids in school full time. I want the schools open. I get parents that say, you know, I really like the hybrid model because I would like my elementary school kids, my kindergartner, my first grader to get that opportunity to meet their teacher and to maybe learn about online learning. This has been a really, and they talk about how stressful the spring was. When I talk to teachers and I hear the anxiety in their voice, I feel that same anxiety. And I am so proud of watching teachers, you know, setting up their classrooms for social distancing and wondering how that's going to work and trying to figure it out. And I've talked to principals and, you know, they're excited about, they would like, especially in the elementary school, to see the kids' faces and get them back in school for some real face-to-face learning. I share your concerns. I am, you know, I'm worried about the transition phases, the kindergartners, the sixth graders, the ninth graders, how they're going to manage. I think that we can deliver better virtual learning. I'm concerned that if we postpone a hybrid model, that the data isn't going to be any better in November when we're also coming up against flu season. But I do want the teachers to know that we do support them and that we don't, the correct number of COVID cases in our schools is zero. That what we do, would we be monitoring community spread? And if that starts to go up, we would close the schools immediately and switch to virtual. But I'm not sure that that data's there either. I'm not sure our testing capacity is adequate. I've talked to people who have spent seven to 14 days waiting for results. That is just too long for us to make good decisions about what the safety is. So there are certainly a lot of considerations in this. And I just want to say that we have some of the best teachers in, I think, in Stafford County. And I see their dedication and I'm really, really proud to work with them. Thank you.
Ms. Healy, you want to?
Well, I want to thank everyone who has corresponded, called, reached out to me, as well as the other board members. And I feel that even though there's a huge difference in where, you know, people want to be or where want us to be, that there is a mutual goal. And that is to get our children educated. And that's with the parents, that's with the teachers, that's with everyone. And I think that's what we need to keep in mind, is that whatever we do, that these children get a good education, preferably an excellent education, but that they not be falling farther behind, whether it's the virtual or the hybrid. Whatever we do, we need to move forward. And it's not a reflection on the teachers because I know they're there, they're ready. And we've heard from a number of teachers, just in the past few days, that want to be back in the classroom. They want to be with their children. They want to be able to share and to teach. So I just want people to know that this is the hardest decision that I've ever had to be involved in. And it's because it involves our families and our children, our staff, and this whole community. And it is not being taken lightly. And the ones that have written in to encourage us, I want to thank you particularly because they were a ray of sunshine. I mean, I have not been able to respond to all these emails. It's just too voluminous. And I have a day job and I have been working. I have not been isolated. I'm in the office, you know, every day. I'm dealing with clients. I'm, you know, dealing just as hazard as. I mean, we're out there working. So to a certain extent, that's a good thing. But there's just not enough hours to be able to respond. I do have one that I would like to address now. And that's a call that I got from a special education student's parent. And the parent was concerned because we seem to not be addressing special education. And I apologized because I said, I just assumed that no matter what the decision is, hybrid, virtual, whatever, that we will meet the special education student's needs. And I think Dr. Kizner on several occasions has said, there may be special education students who will be in school five days a week. So based on that assumption, I have not even brought up the issue. So Dr. Kizner is going to have someone respond to that parent. And perhaps in the next newsletter or status report, you could address that for the parents that you may not realize that anyone with an IEP 504 plan, that those needs are going to be met. But then my heart tells me that every child has a need and every child has a need for that education. And I want to do the best we can to meet those needs, not just when we start school, but as we continue. Because I think, you know, Dr. Kizner is right, we will be back. We don't know when. But we hopefully will be back full time and not too many months from now. But when we get back, we need to be able to continue. And I do have some questions on the presentations, but I'll hold that until we get to the discussion items. So thank you. And thank you for what you're doing, Dr. Kizner, what the staff is doing, what everyone is moving forward with that goal to provide that excellent education to our students and to give some assurance to our parents and our communities that we will continue to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Young, do you want to go?
Thank you so much. So for those, I did get like probably 400-plus emails. And I do read every single one of them. And some of them, it seems that are from, sometimes from the same person, but just a different email. You know, one name comes to mind, Jennifer. But so I love my teachers, I love my principals. I respect the parents, teachers and staff because this is a very, very hard decision. And our superintendent has been working. I could call him or text him anytime. I'm sure his wife is not happy because he just stays up too long. And when he doesn't respond, I'm like, okay, she's right there. Maybe that's why he's not answering me. So that's okay, you know, that you took a couple of hours not to answer me today. That's fine. I understand, Lori. So calling it 100% virtual, I think we should call it something else. But PAM's plan has always had virtual for middle school and high school and face-to-face for the little kiddos because I think that's important. I think we should have face-to-face for parents that want face-to-face. We should have virtual for those parents that need virtual because, you know, the kids are either sick or they need an exemption. But one thing is very, very important to me, and you've heard me say this before, is those students that it doesn't matter if you give them a sheet. It doesn't matter if they have a computer one-on-one. The school is the safest place for them. They don't need to be home. There's a reason why they want to be in school, because it's a safe place for them. So we need to have wraparound services for those kids. Those parents are on the front line. They're working every day. And for us to have those kids in the home by themselves, you do not know what they're going through. So we need to be able to have school for some of these kids that need to be out of those homes. So we do not only need to think about ourselves, those individuals that could have a tutor or that their dad could help them with science or math. So I appreciate every teacher and every staff and every parent that send me an email. You have an email to send to me, some of those voices that we are not hearing today. They need to be recognized, that they need help. My people are dying because they're out there working. But we're going to put them in virtual, at home by themselves, because the parents have to work. So let's make sure that we have wraparound services for some of the, even some of these teachers that have to come in and teach. They need childcare. So let's not just call it childcare. It needs to be called COVID care because we're in a pandemic. This is not normal times. I am for mask policy 100%. I've said that before. I know, I don't know what happened last week. It was CDC guidelines. But we could put stronger guidelines in place and how we interpreted last week. Hopefully today, we could pass stricter guidelines for masking 100%. And I apologize for those teachers that thought I was taking away their tennis class or yoga class on Saturday. That is not the intention. When I was talking about the hybrid policy and some of my board members, colleagues, they know that when I speak, it's like my mind is from the previous visit or from the previous meeting or conversation I had with one of them. So when we talked about the hybrid policy, we were talking about three days on and three days off. At no time did I mean to have six kids in school for six days in a row or teachers to have six days without their Saturday. It was really helping teachers out to say, for example, you could have three days working really hard and maybe you could have Monday and Tuesday off and maybe do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And, you know, you have your Sunday, Monday, Tuesday off. Anyway, so, you know, my colleagues here, they just put a, you know, shut that down really quick. So let's not worry about that. So that was my, that was the PAM's plan to have middle school and high school virtual. So I like that. But I need to see where the wraparound services for all of those individuals that need face-to-face, individuals that need to come in for computer help, for social services, for counseling or just for a meal, just for that one meal, that some of my colleagues here over the summertime, we go to these communities and we deliver lunches for them. And that's where those tears are coming from sometimes because I am there. I do not mind being there, helping out with whatever class, statistics or English or Spanish, whatever it needs. But I don't know, you know, if I could do that as a school board member. But I am here to help and I know the community out there wants to help us. So whatever it is that you all could help us with, we need your help. As a community together, we could get through this. But we need to remember that we're all in this together. We cannot go and divide in ourselves. We cannot work that way. I wrote so many things down and I mentioned none of them. Yeah, sorry about that, guys. I do want to make sure, I know Dr. Kizner is watching me right now, like, can she just like, can somebody just take the mic away from her? We need like a Dell help desk or something. And I'm not getting paid by Dell. But we need, because I don't know if our RTOs, are they capable of handling all the calls because we have 28,000 kids? There is going to be somebody that cannot even turn that computer on. And so we just need to make sure that we have support for Jay and his team. Because it's going to be a lot and that you have the bandwidth, not only physical, but also, you know, to be able to turn on all these computers all at the same time and Zoom. I myself had Google problems. So I just need to make sure that we could work through those problems, right? Okay. Want to take the mic away from me now? Okay, all right. Okay, then, thank you, everyone.
Ms. Randall, you're up.
Yes, I voted to take her microphone away. So I just would like to remind everybody, and I also would like to echo the thank yous for the emails and whatnot that we have received. I just want to remind everybody that we are one division, one team, school board included, superintendent, his staff, all of our educators, all of our parents that are advocating for what they feel is best for their child, which I'm so delighted, whether it's criticism of us or whether it's compliments of us, whether it's out loud just saying what they want for their kids. I think all advocating is necessary and I'm happy to see it. And even I enjoyed the kids from, the girl from Stafford High School and also the students from Colonial Forge who had started their own petition. It's hard to read sometimes. I enjoy it all because it's part of my position. But I want to just also say, we, as a board, it's difficult in our spot. You know, Dr. Warner and I, being new, sometimes want to wave a white flag and say, never mind. But we're happy to be here. Hush, my turn. Hush. We have really, really enjoyed, I can say, I've enjoyed working with my board up here. I've got, you know, it's, there's not a lot of people that know what it's like. And so to have someone to share this experience with, and it's new for all of us, I can't even ask them, what did you do when or how did you handle? Because none of us know. It's all new for all of us. It's not unusual for us to be up at 12, 1, 2 o'clock texting Dr. Kizner when you have a 6 o'clock call. But I also have to say that I'm, it's heartbreaking and heart bursting at the same time to his staff and Dr. Kizner, vacations have not happened. And when they have happened, where they at least get away, they still have to come on a Zoom call, a Zoom meeting and lose part of that. So and I say that not because other families haven't had access to vacations either, but I just want to know, I just want you all to know just how morning, noon and night and even in the wee hours, handling this and dealing with this and Googling this and reflecting upon this, that it is for everybody. And I'm not just talking about all of us in here and up here, but even parents and teachers, because I get the emails all through the night as well. I've also taken a page from Dr. Kizner where sometimes emails, I can tell, are a little heated. And so I've taken a page from him and asked if I can talk to these people. And it has been absolutely enlightening and wonderful to, much like what Dr. Chase was saying, when you go into the schools and you actually get these conversations, one-on-one conversations. We learn a lot, we feel a lot, I cry a lot, I wish a lot, I pray a lot. And I do feel that we'll do the very best we can and we've heard you. Please know that. We have heard you. Because sometimes when a vote happens, we see, oh, they didn't hear us. Oh, no, no, we did. We hear you. We really do. We 100% endorsed Dr. Kizner's plan last week, mask and his return to learn plan. We 100% endorsed it. Didn't change a thing. This week, we're going to clarify it a little more. Last week, I'm going to be the first one to raise my hand to say masking was something that was a challenge for me, but I'm a consensus person. I can, if I, I feel like I understand better how important of a safety feature it is for our staff. It's worrisome to me to think about kids from bus stop to bus stop having a mask on because it is a challenge for myself. But I 100% understand what that means for our staff and what that means for our families. Because I did hear you. I did hear you. I would also like to say, you know, I know we're not supposed to have extra visitors in the building if we go hybrid, but I would be willing to put on a mask and come sit in a room to see what it feels like. You know, I'm not, I would be willing to do that. As a person up here on the board, I do have a child in Stafford County Public Schools. And I do have a child that will be a first-year, first-grade teacher for Stafford County Public Schools. So my lens is from a parent perspective on both levels. And they both live with me. So like I said, I completely respect the masking thing, which I think I was very unclear about last week. I was virtual last week. I know people accuse us of being virtual. We're not. We're always, we are meeting together. I was the virtual lone member last week because I was at a tournament for my son in Delaware. And, you know, I would say I absolutely hated it because I work better when I'm in the room with these seven women and Dr. Kizner and staff. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
All right. No, you started.
Is related to the agenda item itself, so.
Right.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
No, I'd ask for everybody to hold those. Until then, I will try and do my usual, at least grouping if I can, not to stifle comment, but just when we get to that. So let me just give my comments very briefly. It's very hard to imagine why people run for office. Sometimes you really wonder later why, why you've done it. When I used to walk in neighborhoods and explain to people why I ran for office, I said, in deference to my mom, she always said, when I would come home and I'd complain about something and, you know, she said, you get your tenor, you get, maybe on a good day, I'd get 15 minutes to be able to be in complain mode. And then after the 15 minutes was up and the timer was off or the look came, my mom was a kid, was a first-grade teacher for many years. She gave me the teacher look. And she'd say, and I'd go, I don't want to hear it. She goes, I'm going to say it. What are you going to do about it? And that's why I ran for office, is because of my involvement in the schools, because I love kids in general and my own. And that's why I got involved was because what am I going to do about it? I will tell you, I have experienced so many great things by being in our schools and I've experienced a lot of highs and lows as a board member. But I will say this is probably, this has been one of the most difficult decisions to wrap around because if any of you know me, I'm a planner. I love a plan, like know tomorrow. I like to map it out, put it in my agenda, check off the box. And COVID is not my kind of thing because every day, Dr. Kizner, your comment, I couldn't wait to write it down. The only thing that's certain is uncertainty. And us type A and that, that gives us great pause. Being fluid is probably a little harder. My family would probably back me up on saying that and admitting that right here. Maybe they're listening, probably not. But what I think I would like to just say is thank you for those who have written us and gotten involved. And I also though want to say what my mom would say to me. Don't lose this momentum. What are you going to do about it? Yes, we can make a decision tonight that impacts education, but what are you going to do about education for us going forward? And I say us because we are seven voices for education. We are going to make decisions, Dr. Kizner is going to make decisions, his staff is going to make decisions to try to do the best in an uncertain time. But if anybody thinks that what we're going to deliver is perfect, not because we don't have amazing staff, but it isn't going to be perfect, we are going to need remediation and we're going to need additional resources, whether it's this year, but definitely in years to come. So if you have been a voice to say, I want you to do this, still realize there are going to be ramifications to whatever decision we make. Some positive, and I want to state, remain positive, but there are some kids that are going to be left behind. And we as a community have an obligation, or at least I believe the seven people, six people I'm sitting up here with took that oath very, very seriously. But I also need our community to take that same oath. I know Dr. Kizner has made it, so please know I didn't mean to leave you out. You came and you stayed, so thank you. So the, one couple of comments I would say is, no matter how we move forward, I think we have to focus on two words, three words. Tools, models, and help. Education is delivering math, English and stuff, but we need to be delivering an education that is tools to helping kids do things on their own, to develop resiliency, and to work with people like me who like a plan and can't stand it if it changes. Because you have those kids out there, because I was one of them. How do we do those things? And those aren't just going to be in those models and in those time periods. So that's something I want us to think, think about. Models. How do we model what we want the kids not only to be learning, but to be able to receive? Received a email, I believe my whole board did, from a teacher that's very, very dear and to my heart. She saved my daughter. So all I'm saying is, she wrote us an email that said, through the eyes of a child, please, please, all of us as we move forward, remember, we have a lot of kids watching. They are going to be our leaders for tomorrow. What we say to them and how we react to them in this time is critically important. How we treat each other, how we treat them, and how we support school system, that education is important. My final one, I believe I'm tracking with what Ms. Young was saying, is we have to come up with, and so Dr. Kizner, I'm sorry, I'm putting this as a to-do and I think I'm in there, is how can our community ask for help when they need it? Because sometimes it's hard to ask for help. And I don't know if that's something as a community I would like us to think about, but our school system is one of the best tentacles we have into our community is through our children, through our parents, because they love each other and they, but it can be hard to ask for help. So that is something I would like the school division broadly, I know you have all the experts, but that became really clear to me. I was somewhere and I ran into somebody and I could see, they were really embarrassed to say that they truly have no internet and they're not going to get it anytime soon. Believe me, I know where their house is now. And they were like, but how do I? And I'm like, we have to be able to be open to that. And when we're open to that and we're able to allow people to ask for help, we're going to need the resources to be able to respond. So there's mine. Next, we will move on to consent. Oh, Dr. Kizner, I'm sorry. My apologies.
No, no, I will be remarkably brief. I want to really thank you. I've worked for a lot of school boards. I've been at school board meetings the last week that I didn't know, I didn't have to attend. I, people, I guess I'm really speaking to the public now and people in this room. I've, and I say it because it's true, not because I want to get on your good side. You are the most child-centered school board I've ever met. Everyone that I spoke to this past week, and some of you multiple times, every one of your questions or comments, and you heard it tonight, was about the impact on children. So I, I just want to thank you and I want to thank you for your counsel and your guidance and your support. You're a good group of people and, and I wish you would hear that more, but I just want you to know, we are a great school system. And many times we want to give accolades to others, which we should, and give them the victory, but I want to give you a victory too. It doesn't happen without good guidance from a school board, so thank you very much. Those are my comments.
Well, thank you. And thank you to this team and the team that I know has migrated into the chambers. So we will move on to our consent items. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any comment or removal of any items from consent? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously for approval of three consent items. All right, we are moving on to action items. Our first one is the endorsement of the superintendent's amended return to school plan for Stafford County Public Schools. I would offer, before we actually make it into a motion, just because of the newness of this item, I did not want to put it on for information. We can certainly move to that, but I thought we should ask our questions first before there would be any motion on the floor. Is that acceptable or would you all like to go ahead and motion? All right. So let's start with, you know, I'm going to group things a little bit just to get us started, but not to limit. Let's start with the first one regarding face coverings. Are there any comments about that particular portion of what Dr. Kizner presented tonight, which is on page? And I wrote it down, now I've lost it. Excuse me.
Slide five.
Slide five, thank you. Are there any questions about that? Ms. Young, start us off.
It's not a question, it's actually a comment. I wanted to know if we could pull this out of this whole thing because it's something that we already had discussed and if we could make a motion to pass that now. Full mask, 100% mask. Motion, yes.
Second?
Yes.
All right. Motion has been made to, I believe, accept the superintendent's recommendation on slide five regarding cloth face coverings. Any questions? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just, Dr. Kizner, I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't, I don't know how you're feeling in terms of if students were to be outside, would there be mask breaks of some sort for students or are you, and I just, I'm happy to approve this, I just don't want to completely tie the hands of people who are actually having to carry this out, so.
Yeah, so in the first paragraph, the term is developmentally appropriate. I'm not sure if that's the exact correct term. There is going to be times where we have to defer to the judgment of our staff. And I think your recess is an example. I think a classroom where a teacher says, our students need 10 minutes break. I've heard some schools say they go, they socially distance, they go back of the room, they have kids take their mask off. So I think that's how I would answer it. Okay.
And then can I follow up on that just? And again, not knowing what plan will eventually be approved, I, I have heard people express concern about, sometimes when you get to high school, you might have students who are being very non-compliant. I don't know that you see that as much in the little kindergarteners, although maybe you do. And so what, what are your thoughts in terms of how that would be handled if a student is?
Okay, so I think every day when you're in a high school, you see the vast majority of the kids complying with the rules and expectations. So I believe as adults, if we set very clear expectations, that the students will meet those expectations. I'm also real wise that we will have a student or two that will question the expectation. And if you choose to adopt this, you pretty much have said, you have set an expectation or maybe another word is a rule. And if the student violates the rule, then we would handle it through the regular disciplinary procedure that a student would have to address if they violated a rule that the school has set through the school board policy or their own rule. So I will say, as you saw the young children at Conway, I have actually really good hope for our young people because I've seen, I think I told you already, I've seen children of all ages, which I didn't see a couple of weeks ago, I have to tell you, there's been a pivot, wearing masks indoors and outdoors. So I have, I have great trust that will happen.
Any other questions? Ms. Randall and then Ms. Healy.
I just, I kind of have a comment. Like I said, I'm, I kind of, I think, made things go awry last week and I will hold myself accountable for that. But I, and apologize. But one of the things that I have talked to some of my colleagues up here, and Ms. Young has been an excellent example for us, and I would like to say that I appreciated the idea, notion that there could be mask breaks. And in elementary, of course, they have recess. In high school, it's a little different for them, but I know that, you know, help will be there. But the other part of this that I, you know, you mentioned it's a rule violation, but we have this new student code of conduct, which I think is helpful in having the conversations and helping the students to understand the safety, you know, implications that not wearing a mask can have. And so I appreciate the fact that we do have this code, new code of conduct for students to help us, especially in light of something that might be challenging for especially the high school kids.
If I could just add on that, listen to the, so I'm giving credit to the health department of the Fairfax, okay? I heard this today and I think it's a good reminder for all of us. And we challenged this Fairfax community, if you're concerned that the school board is taking these actions, this is something that you could help stop the spread in Fairfax, that all of us have responsibility, if the schools are going to be the only ones that are going to enforce, and this guy was very adamant, that masks are critical, not only in the school setting, but every street of Fairfax. So I do think that if we could get into that conversation with public, that we all contribute to the success of our school division and our community, I believe there's going to be a rise to meet that belief that we're all in this together.
Ms. Healy, I think I had you next.
Dr. Kizner, what, how would you define the facilities here? I think we need to be crystal clear when we're doing.
Yeah, so the football field, the football stadium, you're sitting on the stands, anything that we could say belongs to Stafford County Public Schools. Okay? Transportation, the bus garage, central office, any facility that comes under your responsibility, you have care and control of, is a facility that this policy would go into place.
So what you're saying is on school property?
School property.
Property owned by Stafford County Public Schools. I think that would be more clear because I was thinking of an instance where students come in the bus, you know, depart from the bus, between the bus and the entrance to the school, may not fall under one of these categories. So you don't want the students to be wearing the face coverings on the bus to protect each other, then take them off and then go into school and put them back on. It might defeat the purpose. And I know that I've received, as we all have, a number of emails from parents that were significantly concerned about the students not wearing face coverings to perhaps change their, their choice when there was a choice between a hybrid and a virtual. So I would feel more comfortable if, if we say on school property. And then of course, there's always the exemptions due to the medical conditions and the other ones here. So we're not saying 100% everyone has to do it, but you have to do it unless there is a valid, you know, exemption here. I think that would be more clear if that is, is the intent. And I certainly would be willing to support that. And along that line, Dr. Warner and Ms. Randall may not see any humor in this, but I say it with all seriousness, I suggest we change the will to a shall. Which, which for years I've given the legal lecture, will means may and shall means must. And then of course, the exemptions are part of this. So if there is a valid reason why someone, you know, is not able to, to wear that face covering, that's not going to be required. But I'm assuming that someone is going to be monitoring the documentation of any exemptions that are being requested.
Dr. Warner, I think you are next.
I just want to say that I have always supported the face mask. I know that it's been difficult for many people to come to adjust to this, but the reality is, is that just the cloth masks, if everybody's wearing them and they're maintaining social distance, the risk of transmission is zero. So they do work. Just the nature of the droplets and the way that the infection is transmitted, masks are the most effective tool we have, so I fully support this policy.
Ms. Young, you want me to leave that to you?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on, the comment on, about exemptions. So I know in February, I was allowed that as the lady with the mask when I was entering Giants and everybody's wearing a mask. But exemptions, there shouldn't be any exemptions. If you need to be exempt from a mask, then you need to be virtual. Unless of course, somebody's coming in that is disabled, then they should be free. Like I know you're testing temperature and things of that nature, but then... and things of that nature, but then the questioning needs to be also 14 days, have you been ill, those kinds of things. We're planning on having that, right? I don't want to get into the minutia, but I'm watching, I'm looking at you, Dr. Kizner.
Well, you-
I'm just saying, I'm just asking, like, because those parents are saying, if you're going to have a mask policy, and then you have exemptions, everybody suddenly, I don't want everybody suddenly to have like some kind of asthma, or, so I just need to know for those parents that are going to call me or send me an email, what are we doing?
So, we have 30,000 kids, some of our children, as we talked about earlier, based on their individual needs, a mask, and maybe even a face covering, a shield, might be a challenge. Are there other ways, like having Plexiglas to give support? Are there other mitigating ways to protect the other children, adults in a room, but also to provide that child an education in a setting? So, I just, and again, these exemptions are not original exemptions, these are coming from the Centers for Disease Control. But I just want to make that point, is that the beauty of working with children is that every child's different, and we have to be looking at other ways of minimizing the risk. I am not suggesting by any means, and Colette, who's here, and I have talked about this numerous times, there are other ways of minimizing it, but also acknowledging, and you guys have been in the classrooms, I don't need to get into specifics, where we just got to come up with something else that's, that allows the kid to be in a building, and also allows the classroom to be as safe as possible.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kizner. I know Dr. Chase and Dr. Kizner, you're talking about Conway a lot today, but I just wanted to let you know that I was at North Stafford today, and they're looking really good over there in the way of how they're putting that social distancing together, and I did see that ER class, and those were high schools, and they were looking pretty good with those masks also, so yeah.
I'm calling you three this morning, just to give you a, it's, I'm giving Susan a break.
I'm just going to make a couple comments. I will be supporting this change. I would like people to know that from last week, for me, I felt at that point, myself, unqualified to go further than the CDC. I'm a person who likes to reflect, by and large, on what we were doing, so it's been good to get some of those information. It does concern me, though, when we do talk about, you know, some students of whether they can be in the building, I think that this policy is for 85 to 90% of our population is going to be, but there are going to be exceptions, and as long as, and it appears that Dr. Kizner's looked at, because both staff and students may have some exceptions. So, what I want to be, make, made sure is, I believe this is the 80 to 90% is going to be fully masked, with some allowances within either certain classrooms, or with certain particularities. I believe that our staff are equipped to make those decisions, and if they feel that they're, they need guidance, that they have Colette and her staff ready to provide guidance. In that regard, I would like to just throw out that we probably will need signage, and just some kind of clear expectations of what this policy means in probably a multiple-language document, but I do think signage probably needs to be looked at. I don't know if that's in Mr. Anderson's area or not, but-
Yeah, what I, well, offer the board, I'll talk to John Anderson, his team, an opportunity to visit schools. You'll see that we've purchased a lot of signage, you may already see it as you're visiting schools, but I, we're trying to, I told you that we're putting together videos, and so some schools were making like our model school for the video purposes, but that's what you will see replicated in the other schools. But I will send you guys an email when we're ready to do that.
Okay. Any further comments on this? Do we want to take the recommendation that we would be, students, staff, and visitors shall be required to wear face coverings at all times on school property? I don't know. Does that, right, and to continue with the rest of that sentence, I believe Ms. Young, though, made the motion, but I was, would you be willing to set that as a friendly amendment, or to the, okay, and the second, or was Ms. Hollerback, is that okay? All right, is everybody clear then on the language? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, well, we got into a motion, but that was the first one. Okay, so, with regard to, let's see, we got to page five, well, we didn't quite get to page five, but on our document, the returning to school, I was going to ask, are there any general questions, let's see, about the factors driving the amended recommendation, and then I will probably, which is slide eight, are there any specific questions about sort of the change, or the recommended change, any questions concerning the why? I believe Dr. Kizner has hit on some of them, but if there would wanted to be any further clarification, or comment by board members on how seven days can make a difference. And if not, that's fine, I was just throwing that one out. All right.
Yep, yes, Dr. Chase, was that a wave?
Well, it's just, I was just going to say, yeah, I can understand the change, and I just want to say that, that for, like I said earlier, for me, I'm probably going to need a little bit of time to process this, so I will probably not be ready to vote on this tonight as an entire plan, because I just am going to, as Ms. Healy said last time, this plan even more so, I just saw it tonight, and I'm going to need to get feedback on it from other people. But that's just me, if it's the will of the board, they can, it will be different.
I have a couple of general, I mean, I didn't, I didn't really address it in my member comments, but as a school board member, I'm sitting in on these conversations, and, you know, I get emails from parents, and from teachers, staff, and I realized the other day, I'm a parent, and I don't have anybody to call and yell at.
Go ahead.
So, so, I'm going to, I'm going to take this minute, and I don't want you to answer them right now, because I am going to follow up with an email to you tomorrow.
Remember, I'm your constituent.
But I'm, but I'm, I know that some of these questions aren't just going to pertain to me, that there's going to be, a lot of these have been asked and not answered. So, I'm going to go through them real quickly. As a mom, how are we going to handle 504 support and intervention? What's that going to look like? How do I get a Chromebook for my kid, because he doesn't have one? When are we going to do senior pictures? I haven't heard anything about senior pictures. My son is a senior this year. I want senior pictures. How are we going to incorporate advanced diploma, IB, AP, JROTC in a virtual model? How about CTE? Are the high school principals going to do their own town halls? There are, I'm sure there are thousands of other questions I can ask, but I just wanted to throw those out to you, to let you know that these are still lingering questions, and for me, in particular, like I said, I didn't have anybody to email to ask a question to, so you get to be it. And then, just as a school board member, and you know what, I'm going to stop right there, Holly wants to kind of keep it germane to this, I think, or should I just go on?
It seems like there was not a lot of questions on this one, so I will just go ahead and let you be the first one to open it up.
Well, the other couple of things that I'm really concerned about are, if there's not going to be any need for the full staff that we have, what are we going to do with our bus drivers, cafeteria workers, our maintenance staff, and is there going to be an impact to central office? I mean, if we, if we, if we're not needing full staff, are we going to have to implement furloughs? And answer that now, or don't answer it, but that's a school board question.
I could give you an early answer.
Okay.
I see no reason out right now to discuss furloughs. I think we want to look for alternative assignments for staff. I think our central office staff, I'll break it down by the different category, have worked, and continue to work to support the efforts of the buildings, all our facilities. I think our, two things, I know some of us are thinking, but I'm not going to fall into this category right now, that we're not opening up in, when this, the dates are, okay? I'm going to feel more confident in making a decision, because I'm going to have some data, which I don't have. So, this plan, depending if you look at elementary or middle or high school, is a five-week or a nine-week separation of the hybrid model. And what we don't want, or at least I don't want, is anybody on staff to say, "I'm gone, and I'm not coming back," and drivers, so now I'm talking specifically bus drivers. Bus drivers to help deliver meals, we still should be feeding our children. Bus drivers to, there's going to be children that are not going to have the online connectivity that we would like, but could, but could get packages sent to them. We will need to be creative on how we utilize the staff. I will be the first one to say that. But I don't want to give a message, because I don't think it's the right message, nor do I believe that this is, and a few months from now, you'll say, superintendent, you were wrong, that we are going to be closed as long as people are thinking. And we need the staff here, and remember, a lot of our kids, so if you look at the language, I hope you see that there's a very important sentence in each one of these plans, that says the principal can make a determination of which students could be in a building, okay? And that's going to require transportation, food service, we're going to still feed thousands of children, won't be in our buildings. So, I just think, again, and I've talked to other school divisions that have already made this decision, and that's their strategy also, is to look for ways. I will say, I do want to, I don't know if, if, oh, I don't see him, but I'm sure he's here, to talk to our risk insurance carrier. I did talk to one superintendent, said you should get an opinion if staff members that you hired for one responsibility can assume another responsibility, so that is something that I need to explore. So, I would just say, on July 21st, we will look at a way to make it not just work, not busy work, but what are the areas that we feel could support the operations and instruction of our students, and, and like everything with data, then I might come back to you and say, you know, we went through that exercise, and there now, I have a better answer, that going through that process, there are some positions that, that we need to take another look at. I mean, but I'm not at this point ready to say that we should be doing that.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with Dr. Chase, this is, this is a, this is new, and I think Mrs. Hazard said it earlier, this is all new information. I need to, I need to digest it a little bit. One thing I need you to do is to make a very clear clarification for folks, because I keep hearing this three feet. There's nothing in your plan that allows for three feet. Am I correct?
There's nothing allows for three feet, with the exception of our transportation allows these masks, and that was a plan that the Rappahannock Area Health Department, which now pretty much every school system has accepted, so there is not six-feet social distancing on the school bus. That would get us half the 24, that would basically get us to, you know, 10 or 11 students, so, but those, but the answer to your question, there is no three feet.
So the, all the desks are going to be located six feet apart from each other?
Six feet.
There's no three feet, it's all going to be six?
No, no three feet, I can tell you, no three feet.
Okay, I, again, I just wanted to make it clear, because there had been a lot of people saying, they're going to do three feet, and they're going to let them take their masks off. That was never part of the discussion, so, six feet, thank you, that's all I needed to know. Thanks, Madam Chair.
All right, who wants, who wants to go next? Ms. Healy, go for now.
I have a question about the sample schedules, and we can just look at the elementary on page 15, and that looks like, basically, the schedule is, I understood it with the hybrid model. If we were to be 100% virtual, would the schedule look like this?
Yes, and I'm going to ask Carrie to, yeah, I asked them to come downstairs for us.
Okay, and let me, before we get the explanation, I'll tell you, the basis for my question is, I understood when we were going to have, or we still may, when we're looking at the hybrid model, the teacher's going to be delivering her or his teaching to half the class, essentially, on Tuesday and Wednesday, and delivering probably the same criteria or content on Thursday and Friday. So, the other three days were when the teacher was not available to be delivering to the classes. On Monday, hypothetically, the teacher's going to be planning, if they don't have other, you know, things scheduled, to have to deal, you know, in person. But if we're going to be 100% virtual, my understanding was, from the proposal we saw before, that the virtual would be five-day-a-week instruction to the students. So if we were to go to virtual under this scenario, I don't understand why we could not have five-day-a-week instruction. I mean, my, my concern with this hybrid is the three days when we're not going to have a teacher in front of the students, so, you know, you have to convince me why we can't have a teacher in front of the students five days a week, if it's 100% virtual, so.
Could we put that, the chart back up there?
It's slide 15.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Healy, that's a good question. So, we have definitely, you know, we're evolving as we're thinking about this, too, but the example that you see would work, the kind of unique piece of what we've kind of evolved into, is this schedule would work seamlessly, whether we come back virtually, and, or whether we come back to a hybrid model. So yes, teachers would be engaged in instruction four days a week, students would have instruction five days a week, two of those days would be either face-to-face virtually with their teacher, and essentially, they would follow the same schedule that you would follow as a school day. You would have a break in the middle of the day for students to have lunch, a little break, and then come back. And then the days that you see on the right would be that asynchronous learning, and that also would be, it would be in tandem with the learning that's happening face-to-face, either virtually or hybrid. So it would be involving students who are working in Dreambox, Lexia, online resources, and it's not just face-to-face time, screen time, we have other resources now. We have workbooks that are writing workbooks, we have workbooks that are connected with our math series, so I know that was a concern that I've talked with several parents about. So the online learning is not just online learning, the remote learning at home will be a combination of online and learning that ties into what they're doing when they're face-to-face. The other thing that we want is for teachers to check in every day with a morning meeting, so they have an opportunity to check in with students, make sure that, you know, they're getting a pulse in the classroom, they're connecting that community, and the good thing is, it keeps our community together. One of the concerns about, for example, outsourcing some kind of a virtual, you know, you take it away, other teachers can teach our students, well, that might, you know, that might solve one kind of issue, but it creates a real division in our students and in our communities. We want our families to choose us, so we've kind of moved from a thought of, you know, don't choose virtual, choose hybrid, to choose virtual, if that's the right thing for your family, but we want you to be connected with our learning and our classes, our teachers. but we want you to be connected with our learning and our classes, our teachers." Does that help?
Oh, it's, the explanation is clear, but my dilemma is still that if the teacher is not in front of the students for those second two days, why could not the teacher be in front here? I mean, this, Monday, the three days a week, I'm not even sure how you pronounce these things.
Synchronous and asynchronous.
Yeah, I'm a very, you know, short word if I can have it. If I'm doing the math right, that's anywhere between one hour and 45 minutes a day and two hours and 45 minutes a day.
Would it be asynchronous?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, and so we gave times there, and basically, just so you know what the times, why there's a range there.
Well, no, my question's not the range. My question is, why is it not anywhere close to the days when the teacher's in front of the students, which is, you know, between four and four and a half hours a day? There's over double the time with the teacher, which I think is necessary.
Right.
I don't understand why the teacher can't be in front of the students at least four days a week, because that was the plan when we were going to do the virtual.
So the reason that it's a lesser amount of time is because students will be completing that work, other than the morning meeting that they would be connecting face-to-face. The students would be completing it independently. Now, the good piece of that is, they could complete it any time of day that was convenient for a family. So, if it works better for me to work asynchronously, because I don't have that teacher face-to-face in front of me, but I want, you know, my child to do it when I get home from work, for example, and I'm going to be the one there with them, then the work could be done, say, from four to seven at night. So that's another advantage. The other piece is, if we use that model at this point in terms of virtually, for one thing, you know, the tool that we're looking at, Canvas, to deliver this instruction, it's a great tool. But there is still, and I know some of you have taught online perhaps, but there's definitely a difference in teaching in the fall or the spring, which is going to look very different from the spring. But we taught in groups of maybe six in the spring, and often with an assistant with a teacher. Well, we're moving now to a group of 12, and it is going to look very different. It's a new tool, but we want to make sure that we're giving our students that we are working with the best that we have to give them. So if we started with a group of 27 or 24, or whatever the class was, it can be a real task with, especially with young learners, to really be attentive to those learners virtually in that kind of a, you know, having that kind of a ratio. The other piece is, if you started doing that, when you do come back in a hybrid model, you know, you're definitely going to have to shift if you were to make that decision, because you wouldn't be able to do that anymore. You wouldn't be able to continue at the pace of a four or five days a week for your virtual and two days a week for your hybrid. The unique piece of this is it allows us to seamlessly move in and out. If a student, for one reason or another, needs to come out of that virtual, they're basically going to get the same thing face-to-face. If they need to do the opposite and come out of face-to-face, they're basically going to be on pace with their peers when we move together virtually. I think I said that correctly, one way or the other.
Chairman, I just have one more follow-up. The way the proposal originally came out, and I don't know if it was last week or last month or whatever, my understanding was that the virtual was going to be five days a week. And for, you know, that reason, I think a number of parents opted for the virtual, because they saw that as more of an opportunity to get the instruction before their children. So, is the plan to offer this to everyone, whether they're going to be 100% virtual, no matter when we would come back? Or is there going to be a distinction? Because originally, and I think even last week, there was a distinction, was there not?
See, the virtual, those who chose 100% virtual was five days, but not for five hours a day, okay? That was never told, our schedules that are online have never indicated. Plus, there is something about how much time kids could be in front of a screen. I have to tell you, that's a real issue. The other thing that we heard from a lot of parents, what was attractive about the hybrid, some of the parents were saying that the days the kids are not going to be in school, they're not going to be, they're not going to have access to a computer, okay? They're not, you know, there's, remember, my proposal is all about safety, it's health. I don't want to lose sight of that. I'd rather have the hybrid model if I wasn't concerned about people being infected by the virus, okay? That's the uncertainty that I'm not willing to gamble on. That's just my value system, I'll just leave it at that. But what I did hear is, and I think you got some of those emails, "I'm going to be in a childcare center that doesn't have internet access, or they won't set it up." So, this says, the schedule is, the teacher's going to teach four days. She's going to have her Tuesday and Thursday group, oh, no, Tuesday and Wednesday group, and her Thursday and Friday group. And all kids on the fifth day is going to have some level of instruction, which is a different change, because in the past, we were pretty much saying certain groups of kids on Monday. But the days that they're not in their hybrid model, they're still going to have virtual instruction or remote instruction, but not at a five-hour period. And honestly, in a classroom, a teacher walks around, moves around. Here, you're just basically on a synchronous, you're seeing the kid in front of you, you're not going to be able to check for understanding and clarification. So to ask a teacher to have 24, 26 kids, I just don't think is practical.
Can I just interject? One thing that I think would help, Ms. Healy, is that when we were first given the virtual option, we were still talking about, when we were talking the five days a week, we were talking about Edgenuity and K-5. And so, it was going, that was our virtual option that we were offering for elementary, and then Edgenuity for the middle and the high. And since then, we've moved away from that. And so that was the virtual piece that they were offering our kids for five days a week. And of course, that wouldn't have been necessarily a Stafford County teacher, but that's what they were offering. And now, that's off the table, and this is the new virtual, but that was what.
Was that off last week? Did I miss that last week? I thought that we were still on the five-day-a-week for virtual last week. So if I missed that, I apologize.
I don't know if it was last week, but I know, the week before.
What does board approve last week?
Board approved this. You approved the Wednesday, Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday and Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for a group of children, with the other days having a virtual experience. The other group of children, which let's just say 30%, would be five days a week of remote. The shift was that we moved from having companies like Edgenuity and K-12, Inc., to have our teachers do it, but not at any time where we indicating, and I think really, parents understood this, that they were going to get a five days of five hours of instruction. So, that's what you approved last week. You approved a hybrid. And then on Monday was the only day where some kids were going to get face-to-face instruction based on their unique needs.
Okay, I understand it. I'm not happy with it, but I understand it. Thank you for that explanation.
Dr. Chase, did you have a follow-up in the same?
I did.
We'll do, we'll element, we'll keep going with elementary, is that, okay?
So, I'm just a little worried that morning meeting will only happen for children who have, you know, who are in their home and stay at home with a mom who can take, or a dad who can take care of that. And that if you're in a daycare center, or if you're, you don't have the access, that you're not going to have that morning meeting. So I think it's a lovely thing for students who will actually be able to have it, but it worries me that so many students will not be able to have it. Another thing that is a little bit of concern to me is, and I don't know, I mean, I think for some people, there's the perception that hybrid would be a richer experience, both in the classroom and virtually, than the virtual experience. But if we end up having to be virtual for the entire year, those people who are signing up for virtual might have preferred to have signed up for hybrid, because it would, they would have an actual teacher assigned to them. And so I'm a little concerned about that. That's just me sort of talking about that.
So, that is the difference, that's a key difference in this model, Dr. Chase, is that whether you're virtual or you're hybrid, you would have a teacher in your grade level, because teachers are going to be planning as a PLC. So I'm going to have a fourth-grade teacher, if I'm a fourth-grader, I'm going to have a fourth-grade teacher teaching me virtually. And in terms of the days that students are not face-to-face, either virtually with that teacher or in person, we're basically going to have a similar assignment. It's going to be the same outlay of independent assignments, independent learning, that's going to happen on those other three days. And I say that, but teachers will be checking in regardless. They're going to be checking in on the progress that they've assigned, because we can do that through both Canvas and through Dreambox, Lexia, the different kinds of programs that we work with.
So, will there be, will there be teachers available at hours that families would be home? So if I'm a working parent and my child has been being cared for elsewhere during the day, and I pick them up and bring them home, and now we're going to do this asynchronous instruction, but I have a question, and I can't get the question answered during the workday. Is there a plan for teachers to be available? Because we certainly cannot be expecting teachers to be available 24/7, but would there be some kind of shift, or how would that potentially work?
So we have talked about having some sort of a helpline that would be available, and we could potentially carry those hours on. But the other thing I think to remember is, teachers make themselves available right, or prior to COVID, to work with families. You know, we make adjustments when families need us to make adjustments, and we're going to continue to do that. The morning meeting piece I want to go back to, because in Canvas, we actually can track the attendance of students. It's a great monitoring tool. We can also monitor the activity of teachers, teaching in Canvas, which is something we were not able to do in the fall, in the spring. That's a huge difference. And so what we're talking with principals about is, it is going to be your responsibility to follow up with teachers to monitor that, because principals will be able to monitor the frequency of children who are attending classes, the length, the days, teachers who are teaching classes, the length, the days. And when we discover any anomalies in there that aren't meeting our expectations, for example, the student who is never able to come to morning meeting, then it's our job to reach back out to those families and find out, you know, what the hiccup is and how we can help. So we're ready to be able to do that work, because we know, we want them connected as well.
If I could just say that one thing. If you're sitting here, first of all, my goal is not to try to sell you on this thing. I understand the choice you have, okay? I think I've expressed already what's my motivation. But if you're sitting here thinking that we may be on virtual for a long time, or longer, then I could almost guarantee you, I will feel comfortable saying that, that our school systems will be shutting down. And every, we would be forced to do this without a lot of real planning. So, I have a, when we talk about seamless, what we're also saying is that we could shift. We could shift back to a hybrid, we could shift, if they go down to Phase 2, if there's a local outbreak. So, I just want to remind us, we're not suggesting, or at least I'm not suggesting, we think this is better than I think people maybe realize, because of the fall, the spring experience. But I'm not suggesting that on July 14th, I gave you the plan that I don't think is better for children to learn. I actually do. But on July 21st, I'm much more convinced that I don't want, again, adults or students, like you do, I'm not saying you do, don't get me wrong. But there is some give and take when you have to do the safety priority, anyway.
Ms. Hazard, thank you. I'm looking at this schedule, and it says that the meeting is 8:00 to 8:20, and then they have 8:20 to 9:00, to 8:50, they have language arts. And then from 9:50 to 11:00, this seems pretty continuous, which is not what you would do in the classroom, especially not in elementary school. You wouldn't be able to keep children's attention for that long a period of time, especially not sitting in front of a screen. And I'm just wondering kind of how realistic this is from that standpoint? So I'm a little concerned about that. I, you know, I get that you're trying to merge these plans so that we could go back and forth if we had to, for example, if, you know, COVID cases go down, because I really do believe that we're going to be doing this for a long period of time. I don't believe that there's going to be any cure anytime soon. This is not magically disappearing, despite what many people may suggest. It's not going to just go away. And we have to prepare for, you know, a program that works long-term. So, I certainly appreciate the effort you're putting into this. But I am concerned about this schedule, because it doesn't seem to have any timeline in it, that, you know, and it's very dependent on parents being involved. You know, it's very, because, you know, a kid could say, you know, "I'm tired of this, and I'm just going to, you know, go play with my matchbox cars, and I'm not going to pay attention to this teacher, what's she going to do to me?" You know, it's not, so I'm just wondering how realistic that kind of schedule is.
Right. So one of the, one of the pieces that I think is going to be a real plus to this, and it's one of the reasons that, you know, principals have supported this model, is teachers are going to be planning together in a PLC, which is something that we have been working toward anyway for many years. So I believe that what's going to come out of that is really great quality of instruction, whether you're face-to-face or whether you're virtual. You're, in essence, going to be getting the same lesson with adaptations for virtual or face-to-face. But any good teacher is going to tell you that, yes, we absolutely can have an engaging lesson that lasts for two hours, but it doesn't involve sitting in front of the computer and just listening to a teacher lecture for two hours in elementary. That's not, that's not really, that doesn't really work well for adults either. We know that, right? They're going to be up and moving, they're going to be changing that. We know that, you know, we have, depending on the age level, five, 10, maybe 15 minutes at a time in chunks to deliver that instruction. So, by having that entire team plan the instruction, I do believe in the quality of teaching that we have. The past several years, we've worked together to build that quality in terms of our learning summits, the expectations for what a great lesson looks like. We have PLCs who know how to do that. Keep in mind with this model, it gives principals flexibility to pair any teacher who's requested to be out virtually. They have the ability to pair that teacher with a certain number of students who've also had parents who made that request. So you may have in a school, a teacher who teaches a group A face-to-face and a group B virtually, actually. And they are both in her class, a part of her classroom. Or you may have, you know, a teacher teach, you know, two virtual classes in a grade level. It really depends on how many parents have signed up for that virtual option. And that's the advantage, that either way, your pacing is the same, you have the strongest level of instruction, because teachers can support teachers. And we haven't planned that way before. We've given some general assessment planning, where teachers have developed common assessments, maybe, but in terms of the actual lesson, we just haven't been that tight in our planning. But we know we have to be now. We don't have a choice, because our students are depending on us. Our LAUD folks have put together essential understandings, so the teachers aren't working from scratch. They have a guide to follow of the expectations that need to be taught when they're in that synchronous learning. And then these are items that might be taught for that practice learning or front-loading certain learning that's coming up in the off-hours. And that's the advantage of the synchronous time too, is that, or the asynchronous time, is when you have the parent who can't be there, then you have the luxury of, you did an hour here today, now we're going to do a half an hour here, and we're going to do two hours after dinner. You have that luxury in the asynchronous time to do that, because that's just a time requirement. It's not a certain, you know, you have to be there at this time. Other thing, we are going to be working with our daycare centers. Other thing, we are going to be working with our daycare centers and our childcare centers to share this model with them, so that they can partner with us. We'll be reaching out to them, because we do know it's really important for students who are learning virtually to be a part of that learning. We can make adaptations, we can make packets, but the best-case scenario is if they're face-to-face, even virtually, with their teacher at their school from their grade level.
Well, one thing, I, thank you, and for that, and one thing I appreciate about this model is that I know that planning for a virtual lesson is completely different from planning for an in-person lesson. So this, I think, will make it easier. Teachers won't be planning for both. So I do appreciate it from that point. I am just, you know, I'm, just really remain concerned about our little ones, our kindergartners, who have never been to school, have no idea. We haven't even taught them how to learn. So that's, that's where my biggest, my biggest fear about this is, is that, you know, we're, we're putting them into a situation that they're not ready for yet. And I don't, you know, we're not there to help them, so.
Yeah, we're going to definitely, whether it's remote or face-to-face, have to provide that training to our, to our families, to our students, and our staff. It's, you know, it's going to be, have to be multi-tiered, so we'll be designing what that looks like. And again, we didn't have that in the spring. We just kind of threw everybody into it.
The training has to be ongoing, but please also note that the first two weeks, we say that the staff, the parents and students come in for an orientation for K-5 that we were planning to do in last week's model, but we extended it for two weeks. So there's a recognition, but it has to be on, ongoing. I will say something about the schedules and fairness to them, because there was a request. I asked them to put schedules together, and their only reservation to me was, they have to know these are not the final schedules. But just to give them a model, I said, that's why we have the word "sample" up there, but just so they could at least get a picture of what it, but not that they ever resist what I asked them to do, but this was one where I would say, you know, they were, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but I don't think they were loving the notion that we were going to put something out there, knowing that people may interpret this as the final schedule.
And I don't believe this is the final schedule, but, but I just want to say that, you know, I need, I may need a little more time, like Dr. Chase and Ms. Hollerback, to kind of really review this.
I also want to make sure, I'll do this also. Tomorrow night, because Ms. Hollerback mentioned about Town Hall, tomorrow night, we have a Town Hall scheduled from 6:30 to 8:00, just on the virtual learning, okay, that, and we have all LAUD chiefs and other people that will, for an hour and a half, we've got a lot of questions in from parents. And again, I hope people are going to our website, because I think if you've been monitoring it, it's a lot stronger every day. So there's a lot of information, but tomorrow night, you know, we're going to spend 90 minutes answering parents' questions about the virtual learning.
All right, Ms. Young, yes?
Thank you. I was going to ask that same question, like, we may know PLC and async and sync, because I'm an online learner right now, but parents don't know. And so it's a good thing that you're going to show them exactly what does the class look like for their child, either Cornelius or Johnny. What does that class look like for the child, the middle school or the high school? Because, you know, my plan was middle school and high school, virtual, I'm good with that. But the little ones, I think, it's going to be hard, and I see face-to-face there, because the schedule that you put up there, I know what async means for me, is my time to do my homework before class. But then you had days on there, so I wasn't sure what that meant. So I was confused, and I'm confused. I'm wondering what the parents are thinking, like, what is this? So that needs to be clear, what it is that we're trying to tell them that their day is going to look like. And I was also, in my understanding, I thought if you're going to go virtual, that you're all day online, you know, four classes or something, math, you know, you name it, depending if you're doing, like, college, Tuesday and Thursday, and Monday, you know, Monday and Wednesday is something else, Tuesday and Thursday is something else, and Friday you catch up, or something like that. That's what I was thinking in my head, so I'm not sure. Now I have to go back and figure out what it is that we're doing here.
And it will look a little different, obviously, in middle and high school than it does in elementary.
Yeah, it would be nice for them to have a sample, like, a good sample of what their day is going to look like. I'm not sure if that, that's it. But that was just me, off the top of my head, thinking about that. And of course, I know you're saying that, you know, when we switch back to hybrid, and then I'm hearing also, we're not going to switch back to hybrid, because we will have to shut down to virtual. So I think we need to be able to do something very well. Like, if we're going online, let's do that. Contextually, let's do that very well. I know we're doing planning, and it didn't happen yet, but we kind of need to, like, walk through it. You know, we have some classes right now, but we need to take a group of students and say, "Look, are you all willing to, let's go virtual early before August 31st, so we could test our work and see how it's doing." And then, because we could plan all we want, but when it hits, it's 28,000 people trying to get online at the same time with the sheets and all that, and, you know, this one can't get on, and that one can't get on, and, you know. I am worried, and I'm sorry for breaking down earlier, but I know some people that are in trouble, right? That even with the computer, that computer's not being plugged in, right? Because that young child needs to clean, and stepdad is at home, and mother is working. So I'm not sure how are we going to reach them. I don't care if we're talking about, you know, the luxury, and that word, like, it struck me for a minute. They don't have luxury. So I'm trying to figure out how we are going to have services to wrap around them to make sure that they don't fall further behind. And I said earlier, and I know I'm just saying this over and over again, these are the people that are going to suffer. We see it right now, but it's going to get worse, because this is not going away. COVID doesn't care, Dr. Kizner said it, doesn't care about zip code, but it does attack certain individuals earlier than others, and for that, I fear. So that's, that's one thing. Yes, yes, sir.
I know George, I think Dr. Harmon's here. I just want, because you mentioned wraparound a couple times. I do want you to know that, and it's not in the plan, but I do want you to know that our counseling, and our social worker, and our nurses are going to be available virtually. So there's going to be supports for children and families, even though majority of them, vast majority of them, won't be in our buildings. Just wanted to.
True, okay. And then, so for those that don't, can be virtual, those are the ones that I'm worried about, that you're going to drop the paper off at their home, and they're still not going to do that homework. So those are the ones that I need to make sure that they, they're coming in for face-to-face, right? And so when you mentioned, if we're going virtual, and I'm not saying 100%, I'm just saying, virtual plan, then we don't need three feet, because most people are going to be home already, right? So are you still planning on doing the bus three feet? Because there're not going to be that many kids.
Is the question, will transportation change?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that three feet, when we were talking about three feet, it's not going to be an issue, because most people are going to be virtual.
Yeah, so, I mean, we will have greater flexibility for our buses to.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly, right? And then I'm going to, I'm going to keep on that help desk that we need, we need. Is the board looking at this? We need some money for that help desk. Yeah, so you did mention social, emotional support, counseling, and the meals. So I know you mentioned that, and you're good at that, so. I've talked to a parent yesterday also. We were in Wawa, bought her a cup of coffee, and asked her where she got the mask, because they were really cute, they were little, with little kids, and cup, something, I'm not advertising for it, but they were really cute masks for the kids. And I asked her how the kids were, you know, how they felt about the mask. And she said, "Oh, they were good." As a matter of fact, they were fighting and practicing at home, how they were going to be in nursery, so that they could put on their mask. But all the kids in the nursing, in nurse care have the mask on. And so I just wanted to mention that, that these mothers, they just go to work, the front line, the doctors, the nurses, and even the teachers that I've seen today in school, everybody wearing a mask. Dan's, Dr. Horneck's mask was dropping a little bit under his nose, so you need to let him know to tighten it up a little bit. His mask is not fitting well, but he, yeah. Yeah, but it was like, but he's a cutie, so I don't mind if it was dropping at all. I could see his smile. And then the last question, yeah, and he's married, no problem. So the other thing, the last thing, have you been able to get any waivers for a teacher's licensure? I know I keep pushing that. Don't be mad at me.
So I think Ms. Hollerback raised a good question about ADM. If we're going to work with our General Assembly members for the August session, again, the General Assembly basically decides the licensure. The Department of Education, State Department of Education executes that. So you might as well, and we could help structure the letter for you, and you guys could sign it, both on the ADM and on the licensure, and any other issues that you bring up. I would probably recommend that we meet with our local delegates first.
I already made calls into them.
And so they understand what we're actually asking.
I did make calls, Dr. Chase and I, we already made the calls, and they're moving those forward, so whatever it is that I have to do, even if I have to talk to Dr. Northam himself, I will. No, I got contacts. What do you think? What you laughing at?
Movement now on bus, on bus drivers and the DMV closure? So advocacy lobbying definitely helps, yeah.
Middle of the night or not? Stay there, stay there, Ms. Neely, just for, is there anything else on elementary? I'm sorry, Ms. Randall. I'm trying to keep up with everybody.
Okay, first of all, I forgot to mention this. Dixon Smith Middle School did a really great video on Facebook as an introductory for sixth-grade students about the mask-wearing, not using lice, not using lockers, had their class, it was a great video, very enthusiastic. So I had asked about each school doing a video, and so I was thrilled to see theirs, and let's just see some more. But the other thing is, I had a really great conversation about Canvas today with another educator, and she is in charge of, she's part of the teaching cadre in the schools of, on Canvas. And so it was great for me to get an education on it, because I don't know it, and, at all. And I'm in the same class as Ms. Hazard, zero technology. Like, my screen went dark, what do I do? I don't know. So anyways, but what I really was impressed with was, she was sharing with me similarly, but that they are also taking the classes with Mary Washington this summer, and to get their trainings, which I had heard Dr. Kizner mention, but I didn't know how it was being offered. And so they are, teachers are into the whole campus training. There are leaders in every school that do this. And she was also explaining to me how it's been really great working with the other teachers in her building to put together, like you were talking, in these professional learning communities, where they're able to already load in their lessons, ready to go. So I was, I was really delighted to learn about it and excited to hear about it. But, so my question is, with these, you were talking about, like, okay, a fourth-grade kid who put in that they want to be all virtual, and then you have a child's parents who put in that they want hybrid. Could they, could they both exist in Mrs. Smith's class? Or would, okay, so what happens when we switch back to all hybrid, or potentially can come back in, but those virtual kids want to hang out or stay out? So how, I mean, I just don't, I think that's a lot for her to do, Mrs. Smith, but I don't understand how, like, if she has, say, you know, six kids that are all virtual, and 20 kids that are hybrid, but are out virtual, coming in hybrid later, or whatever, how that works, how does that work for her?
Right, and that's one of the real appealing aspects of the schedule from a principal's perspective, when trying to schedule all of that. Because as you can imagine, that's going to present, just scheduling the A and B, in some instances, will create a challenge. But let's say you have 36 students on a grade level whose parents have requested the virtual. So you may have one teacher, again, teaching two virtual classes, and you may have, who, maybe that teacher requested to be virtual, so you need her to teach all virtual. And then Mrs. Smith's class might, I might teach one class, or my A section, face-to-face, and my B, virtual. And what that allows is some flexibility for principals, because keep in mind, when we do come back into a hybrid model, it's very likely, unless we do have a vaccination or something, it's very likely that we're not going to come back into a situation where all parents are going to immediately feel comfortable coming back to us. So you're going to likely have a staggered, you know, re-entry, let's say. So we'll still have teachers who would be available at that grade level to do the work that we need them to do, and work with the students that they need to work with. So that's actually a huge advantage. Now, let's say, you know, Ms. Smith's, you know, class, all but two of them decide that they want to come back to the hybrid model. Then we may have to make some adjustments within a grade level to serve those students virtually, but we can do that very easily within a grade level. And keep in mind, the instruction is going to be the same. That's the benefit, the pacing is going to be the same.
So a Rocky Run virtual student, all virtual student, will get a Rocky Run teacher?
Yes.
So that's, that I like. And I know the samples was a lot of work. It was the, my asking, because I'm a very visual person, and so I really, really appreciate the work at all three levels to produce these samples. I do still have more questions at the other levels, but I just wanted to really tell you that I appreciate you putting forth the effort to make a visual something for me to look at.
Absolutely, and I don't know if our expressions maybe gave another impression, but we did already pretty much have this worked out, so. I will tell you that we, you know, I've been trying to call parents who have, you know, if we get an email, I'd much rather call a parent and talk through this piece, and in just sharing out a few possible changes with parents, they were not comfortable with a K-12 outsourcing of my child, because they still want their child to be connected to Rocky Run, or Ferry Farm, or.
And that's why, when I, in the one scenario, when we were talking, I thought there was an equity issue to do that. And that's why I was confirming with Dr. Kizner in that one meeting, where, so our K-5 kids are going to do K-12ing, our 6th through 12 are doing edginess. Honestly, it made me want to vomit, because I just don't like that. I really like our teachers. I really want our teachers, our kids need our teachers.
Yes, I agree.
And so, and our teachers need our kids. I mean, they didn't want to see these kids, you know, outsourced to a Virginia-certified teacher who lives in Texas. They want their kids. So I much prefer this. I am also in the same frame, though. I need a moment to digest, 5 o'clock appearing in this. I'm like a 24-hour, let me chill out on this. So I don't know that I'll be, I won't be voting tonight if the will of the board is that way.
Well, if the plan for a virtual model is, is this, is the same as a hybrid, I don't see why planning can't begin, whether we vote or not.
If I could, I would just would like to ask my questions on the elementary, and then what I'm going to ask the board is if we could take a five-minute break. I know I need to get up and walk around or something, and then we can come back and maybe address sort of the timing. But since everybody got their own elementary questions, I'm going to at least ask mine. But, so we do a five-minute break afterwards. No, that's what I'm going to do, no, no, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to, I'm going to ask, finish my question, so we can sort of, I won't say conclude elementary, but at least this, this round. First, I wanted to hear a little bit more, which makes me happy, about the envisioning of the plan for the reach-out to the families during the dates, 17th to 31st, if I've got them wrong.
if I've got them wrong, it's on me. Can you just give me a little bit, and actually, let me ask part B as well. Is there a thought that there would be testing and assessments done? Because I know, at least at the elementary levels, for our kindergartners, they used to be kindercats when they were at Margaret Brand, there is something that I think our teachers would like to know about our students, just where are they at? How do we know where they are? How are we going to be able to accomplish that under any of these models? But I am especially concerned about how we can do that, and should that be in-person learning? Because I don't really remember the tests, it's been a long time since I've had elementary. So, maybe those all link together, but...
So, I'll go backwards. Certainly, you know, the best way to assess a kindergartner is going to be in-person, right? If that's not possible, one of the great things about Canvas is it allows us to pull a small group of students out, so you would still have, and I know you all have been wondering how we're going to use our paraprofessionals, well, this is a great example, the paraprofessional may take over the rest of the class and drive, while the teacher works with a small group to create, you know, and to assess students to know where they are. So, that's a huge, huge advantage. Obviously, we still have more to figure out in terms of the details of what that looks like, but that would be an opportunity there. In terms of the orientation, although we have not, you know, come up with an exact formula for what that's going to look like, you know, depending on, you know, Dr. Kizner's direction, you know, we might be able to have families who are willing to come in, in small groups, to actually do some kind of face-to-face with physical distancing, you know, with the parameters laid out, you know, we could offer that. What I personally see is giving folks choices, and so, if you're comfortable coming in, we're going to provide a small group orientation for you this many times a week. If you're not comfortable coming in, we want to be responsive to that, too, or you can't for a health reason, then we would want to reach out to you, and, you know, through Google Meets, or hopefully some other, again, virtual kind of format, we can do that. Because again, we know that we've got to train our parents, as well as our students, for that, the work that they're going to be doing online. We did have a pilot with, someone had mentioned, maybe Ms. Young, you had mentioned a pilot, and that was the intent of this year's summer work that we did, we had teams collaboratively planning. We do have feedback on that summer work, and a lot of it is really great feedback, because we had exceptional teams putting that work together. So, all of our students in summer school, at each grade level, experienced a similar experience, but the two things that we got were, one, internet issues became, either on the teacher end or on the student end, were huge, we have to take care of that. And the other one were kind of that rules of engagement, you know, parent, what do we need for you to do to support your kindergartner? And for some kindergartners, that might just mean you need to be in eye shot, so you can see that they're engaged, and for others, you might need to be sitting right next to them to just help monitor and keep them on task. So, we have learned a lot already that we can use in our training moving forward.
My final comment on elementary, for any of us who have had students go through elementary here, almost all of us are going to know our mascot, maybe even our class song. I will not sing it, that would not be a good thing to do at any time of day, but I still know, and all I'm trying to say is, the focus on that community, because I will say, our elementary schools, people are really tied to their elementary schools, and I just hope through those, those sessions, that there can be something about the school, because that's what gets parents excited, that's how I got on the PTO, and never got off. But, you know, it's, I think we need to do that, because the parents, I think, are struggling to, of how to be involved, and many of them are scared, because they don't feel like they're teachers. So, it's, I think there's a lot there, so...
Can I ask one more thing?
Sure.
So, and I know this is in the preschool model, but I didn't know if it would also apply to the elementary, is you have instructional options, could include face-to-face, home visit, virtual, and home learning packages. Would that also apply to elementary? And if so, both, I'm talking for preschool and elementary, would an administrator be the one to say, oh, I need you to do a home visit instruction, or would that be completely up to the teacher? I don't know how that would work.
Excellent. So, I think it's both, and I think it's...
But it applies preschool and elementary, are you thinking?
Well, we could definitely consider elementary. Preschool are very accustomed to doing home visits.
Right.
There's a protocol for home visits.
Okay.
And I just don't feel comfortable saying yes to elementary, until having greater conversation with the principals and teachers, but preschool, I think...
Okay.
Okay, what I'm going to say to the board, let's take a five-minute break, just to clear, and then we will come back, all right? So, take five minutes.
We need to think about how we're going to get through this decision.
So, we are in recess for five minutes. All right, I would like to call the, call us back from recess, thank you all, I know I needed that. So, where we are at this point is, there is still some more slides to go through, however, it appears that there is a, at least consensus of the board, that to not vote this evening on, on the plan, but to make sure that everything is addressed, that we can bolster whatever we're even presenting to the public in the best way, is what I am hearing. However, in that, in that vein, we don't want to wait too long. I know several members of us have meetings tomorrow and Thursday that are associated with school board business. So, I would suggest to the board, either a Monday or Tuesday next week, with a special called meeting for a endorsement vote. So, I'm going to ask members to check their calendars on those dates, and is there a preference? I'm open for either one of those.
Monday or Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday, the, sorry.
Twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, I'm free Monday or Tuesday. I didn't get any, nobody loves me.
Twenty-seven, is there a preference for Monday versus Tuesday? And Dr. Kizner, what are your thoughts? If either.
I, I, Monday or Tuesday, both work for me, I'm just hoping, if there's any way we could do it, not seven.
No, I was going to suggest six.
Yeah, early, if we're going earlier, and I can go even earlier than six, the twenty-eighth is better for me than the twenty-seventh, but I can be flexible.
Is there, is the twenty-eighth open for everybody?
Yes.
Yes. Yes? Yes.
Tuesday keeps it consistent with our typical meeting days. We've been meeting on Tuesday, and special call meetings have been on Tuesday.
They're done for the summer. I will put in a request that we can meet here, so stay tuned exactly on location. My hope is that we will be here, but I, there, the conversation that Dr. Kizner and I had with the chair and vice chair today was very positive. However, you know, we still need to double check their, their schedule. Is there a?
Madam Chairman, the, the BZI also meets here, but they meet at four thirty, I think. I'm not sure what day they meet. They, they used to meet the fourth Tuesday. They used to meet on Tuesday.
So I will, we will, we will find a place. Hopefully, it will be here, but is there an appetite to move it to five thirty on the twenty-eighth? Is that better?
That's fine.
That works for me.
That works. All right. Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. So we're consistent with usual school board business day, except for, I will deal with that part. So if we could go ahead and at least make sure that it is noticed, I'm hoping by tomorrow morning, or by the time I get home, we will be coordinating with our counterparts to see if this building, this space, meeting space is available for Tuesday night. All right. I would say then to board members, if there are other comments or questions that you have specifically about slides, I'm going to give everybody one more pass tonight, but I would ask kind of broad, that you direct your comments. You can either do it by slide or topic directed, in case there's something that you really think is necessary, or that needs to be part of the plan going forward as a communication to our, to our families and students. So who would like to start us off with a comment? Ms. Randall?
Number one, how are we going to deploy Chromebooks? And I know we had this as a sidebar conversation, Dr. Kizner, but can you talk to us about those teachers that would like to or need to come in to teach their classes?
This conversation, I will continue with the principals, but my initial reaction is that many of us experienced, pretty much in March, but still, there's a lot of people that are working remotely, okay? And my feeling is that we're going to have metrics to measure engagement, student performance, and so on. And then if, if we are seeing that students are meeting their objectives, and staff are obviously the ones that are helping students meet their objectives, right now, I don't see any issue with teachers working from their home. I think teachers are professional enough, I have trust in them. If they need to get materials, if they feel more comfortable in the buildings, the buildings will be open. So if they want to work in their classrooms, I think you may see at times that people will want to go into the buildings, and there might be some that want to go in the buildings all the time. So the, the buildings will be open, all thirty-plus buildings will be open. But I'm personally not concerned if, if we discover that there is concerns, the principal will address that with that individual staff member. But, you know, many of us, including myself, for a couple of months, worked from home, and I don't think, hopefully, you may not even notice that, my performance didn't, what's that?
I said I saw your basement.
Okay, so, it was a little dirty. But, so, you know, I, I just know there are still people that are, that are working from home. I also feel again that there will be people that will conclude, I'm better off at the building, if not every day, most days. So I, I like to leave it at this point with the, with the adults to make that decision, with understanding that the way we're going to see if it's effective is how our students are doing.
And Chromebooks? How are we getting Chromebooks? How are the students going to get their Chromebooks?
So that's a great question. So this is another way we're going to be using our drivers, we're going to, bus drivers, we're going to basically do, deliver, we're going to have two different ways. We're going to have, like we've been doing, which we did in the spring, have times where people could drive to the schools and pick up, but also, there'll be children that won't get it that way, so we will deliver Chromebooks to families that need it. We'll transport it, yeah.
Ms., wait, hold on.
I just have a follow-up to that. We're not going to use the school buses, are we? I mean, they use a lot of gas if we're going to be driving, you know, Chromebooks to individual houses. I mean, I don't have any issue with the bus drivers driving, but do we have any other vehicles?
I know we have some food delivery trucks.
Transportation, unless they bring us their district books? There's only one?
I mean, there's, you know, we take a bus, you know, built for seventy-one students to deliver a Chromebook to, you know, a house. It seems to me that that is potentially not a very economical use of, you know, a gas-guzzling vehicle.
I'll, I'll work with our team to figure out how we do it economically, but the key thing is, again, the Chromebooks to students.
I have a follow-up question on that, about the Chromebooks.
Okay.
Dropping them off, Jay's watching me.
Jay's watching me. Dropping them off is one thing. If they don't have anybody to install them, is somebody working with these families?
I'm staring at you because I'm trying to read your lips, but I can't read.
Is there, if they just are given a Chromebook, it doesn't mean they know how to set it up?
Oh, you can't hear, oh, sorry, yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
You can't read lips either.
Yeah, so, again, the elementary children, to our orientation, will get their Chromebooks. We've, it's not like our kids have not been on Chromebooks before, but we need to do significant outreach to our families, because we're talking about a whole new Canvas program, our Canvas learning management system. So we're not going to just hand a Chromebook to somebody and say, turn it on and good luck. That will be the responsibility of our staff, but there's no question that there are going to be families that are going to need more support than others.
And, and so, I had a question here that I didn't ask was, so you mentioned that the principals were, will identify those individuals that need that face-to-face. Do you have a count? Do you, is this what you're planning on doing this coming month? Or you already have an idea, you're already getting those tallies in?
Yeah, well, so tomorrow morning, I have a meeting with our principals. Again, the principals know their students the best, so that's why it's more important they do it than the central office. The conversation will start, and I say this respectfully, but the board hasn't yet adopted a plan, so it'll be.
But it was not about this plan. I've asked this before, and I didn't get the answer, so that's why I was asking it again. It was not even about this plan, basically, the underserved kids that I know that are out there that did not have a one-to-one Chromebook. Are we planning on making sure that even when they do have the Chromebook, if they cannot use it or need help, that, that there be identified? And if you already have those numbers, then I think it's okay.
I, I appreciate the question, I really do. Our teachers and principals know who our at-risk children are. They deal with them one hundred and eighty days a year, okay? Will there be new children to our school system? Absolutely, that will have to do some assessments to learn, but I, I think if any principal was in this room, not by name, but they could give you an idea of how many children they're speaking about. Now, again, even some of our at-risk children, their families did not want their children in school. So it's not as simple as you are just at risk, you're coming to school. We have to now, again, I've been using the word, you know, customize, around that, that, that family request and the students' need.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hollerbeck.
So in my mom questions, there, there was one in particular that I asked about the principals possibly holding a town hall. I think a lot of the questions that parents have are very high school specific, so I have questions about Brookpoint specifically. So will Tim Roberts hold a town hall meeting so that parents can ask questions about scheduling and about senior pictures and, and extracurricular activities and things like that that are germane to?
The answer is yes, they could absolutely do that, and they will do that.
I think that would help clear up a lot of confusion for parents if they could know exactly what their school was doing. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and the chiefs are here, and they're all nodding in the affirmative.
Dr. Chay.
So I don't, I don't have specific questions, I just wanted to sort of, I mean, these are more me processing between now and, and when the board will, will make some kind of vote. So to me, I really need some consistent reason for why I'm doing what I'm doing. So if I'm saying that the schools aren't safe for children to be in them, I don't understand how they can be safe for exempted categories, and I don't really like exempted categories because they're children. And so I don't quite understand, and I'm, I'm just dreading the optics of an immigrant child or a special education child getting COVID and having a really, getting, getting very, very sick, and we exempted them in some way. So I have to, I'm not asking for a response, I'm just saying, and I, it's just something that, that for me, that I'm going to need to process, that vulnerable children can be put in a building that we have decided that, that it's too risky. And so I'm just trying to, to wrap my head around that. And then another thing, you know, our bus drivers put themselves at personal risk to deliver meals, and so did some of our staff. And so I'm very, very committed to, to not having those folks at the end of, of whatever, if the money just explodes, that, that those folks are not taken care of. So that's something that, that's really sort of important to me. And then just as a general comment, I'm, I'm quite happy to see virtual for high school as a proposal, because I have been and continue to be very concerned about multiple transitions throughout the day to, to various classrooms, and being, that you could have a super-spreader event very easily happen, so. And, and that's just me processing, and thank you.
And I want you to process. I, I do want to say something about the building. The building is not going to cause the COVID- nineteen. What happens in a building is you have people and then the droplets. So as you decrease the number of people, and you follow the social distancing and having the mask, you're limiting greatly the chances of spread occurring. But you are completely correct that by even having a few children, there's not, I am not suggesting that someone still cannot get ill. Good.
Dr. Warner, do you have any comment?
I'm just going to kind of process.
No, I have no questions at this time.
I'll just make a, a final comment to those who are here, and I know we have staff. This is a weighty decision for this board. And I understand, like I said, I'm usually a person who wants to charge right in, that the board may be asking the majority of us to just make sure we really understand it. We want to make sure that we understand it, we want to make sure our parents understand it, so that everybody can make the best decision for their family. And the only way you can make the best decision for your particular family is to make sure you understand what is being presented. Dr. Kizner, please correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, we still are moving full speed ahead with a learning model, that virtual is going to be a part of it under any scenario. Canvas is going to be a part of it under any scenario. I do not want this board to slow down that process. I don't want anything that we may be delaying this till Tuesday to say that we are stopping this reaching out to our families, making sure we are getting good and accurate information. And most importantly, that we are saying to our staff, we value full speed ahead of going forward, because we are going to educate children in Stafford County, and we are trying to find the best way. The only other comment I would make is, again, a rush to approve something and we miss something, or we want to go back, we want to make sure whatever it is is the best plan. There's a lot of information tonight, at least, that's how I felt, and I appreciate the work that has gone into it, and because things are constantly changing. I just don't want the families to think that we've made no decision. We have made a decision. I don't believe that this board, if I am incorrect, I need somebody to jump up, that any, there is any thought that we are changing the dates of starting to school, or dates for our staff to report. I mean, I believe that that is correct. So in terms of planning, those dates are not going to switch. It may be whether, where we will be meeting, or whether you will be able to do virtual, please stay tuned. So I just wanted to make that statement tonight, and it is not saying one way or the other of, of dissatisfaction. Those who have written to us who have said, most people usually say to me personally, hey, I'm glad I'm not you, to have to make this decision, whatever it is, and, and remember, this is one decision of many. I mean, I hate to say it, this is the start of a chain that we've been making since March, and they are weighty, and I know this board wants to make the best decision. I wish there was a right and good and perfect decision, but I don't see that being there now, so we want to make the best decision that we can make. So please know to families, to those watching, no dates have changed, we just want to process, and if you have questions about how this model will work, please let us know. We want to make sure you make the best decision. Dr. Kizner seemed like he wanted to say something.
And watch TV, watch the six-thirty town hall. I do want to reiterate what you just stated. Our planning has not stopped one second. There are some things that would be adjusted, I have to also tell you, like transportation, trying to work out the schedules, the concern we have with meeting the remote, the hybrid, and the one-hundred percent, there is a staffing challenge here. This staffing challenge, I do want to correct something that, I usually don't do this, but if people were listening, and, and it's not corrected, then people might think it's factual. There was a comment made in hearing of, of the public that a hundred and ten people, a hundred and four, whatever the number was, asked for exemption. Those are a hundred and four people that had a health risk, okay? The comment implied that every other teacher wanted to come back. I just wanted to make sure that, that that's corrected for the record.
Ms. Young, sure.
Thank you, Chairwoman Healy. I said it again, I'm sorry, Miss Chairwoman Hazard. I said it again. You, you want to go first? Go ahead. No, no, go ahead first, since I mentioned your name, go ahead. Yeah, I called her the wrong name again.
It's hard to hear when you're way at this end of the.
That's okay, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to, to ask Madam Chairman, if we could make clear on the record that we did make a decision with respect to the rule with respect to face coverings, so that there is no confusion with the public about what that policy will be, what it's going to look like next year, and if we could perhaps post that policy as, I'm not sure it was a policy rule, whatever we want to call it.
We'll put it on our website, yeah.
That ruling on our website tomorrow, I think that would be, you know, very helpful for the public to know, because there was a lot of confusion after the meeting last week, not just in part of the public, I, speaking for myself, there was confusion with me when people were asking, well, what did you decide? And I thought it was one thing, and, you know, other people were saying something else. So, so we are deferring this decision on the, the, the format for the, the program delivery, but not with respect, with respect to face coverings, and that will be, in effect, reg- regardless of whether we have, you know, 100% virtual or not. So, anyone coming onto the school property, whether it be at a school, at central office, at transportation, any facility, that would apply across the board.
And if I could take it this step further, I'd like to make it affect like now, like you voted on tonight, starting like tomorrow, that goes into effect.
Okay, Ms. Young.
Yeah, okay. So, I'm going to ask the question again. I know I heard that the teachers are going to have training for virtual. Is that what I heard? So, did they all know how, you know, so, okay. Are they also able to come into the school if they're having problems, to be able to use computers in their classroom? Yeah?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And then, I think it was mentioned that we have all we need in terms of the, a Chromebook one-to-one for every student. Does that include the other requirements, such as software, support, insurance, training, network tools? You have everything, you don't need, I'm just asking, do we need money for that? Do we have the money for that?
Well, I think the answer is no, but if you want to say yes.
We have 508,000 instructional licensing and technology.
But you're talking specifically for the Chromebooks, or things to put-
Chromebooks and others. There's a lot. There's insurances, there's tools, there's networking, that's all that stuff. Do you have that?
Yes.
And then, your manpower, you said that you could handle the phone calls coming in from parents, children, everything. You can handle that?
Go ahead, yeah.
So, on the question of the help desk, we're ramping up and trying to figure out how many we have, people we will need. We're doing a lot of research on that, asking other school divisions. So, we probably, we definitely will, I just don't know what the answer is.
So, do you know what the north or the south is doing in terms of that? Like, do they have like a help desk internal, or do they have help from outside?
I didn't understand.
Ooh, sounds better. Do you know what other school systems are doing? Do they have help?
Yeah, they usually use student interns and things like that, a lot of college students, et cetera.
These college students that are in college right now?
Well, they wouldn't be helping during the day or during their class period, they'd be doing it during, be like a work-study thing.
And then you all would do it during the daytime, is that what you're saying?
No, they would probably, well, it depends on when the students had class. High school students may be able to help in the evening.
Looking more at elementary, if, you know, if they're first.
Yeah, they would be able to help early, before school started, to, you know, later. We're still trying to define exactly what we will need to do.
So, Mr. Cook, just bring us back, bring us back some of the ideas. Look at the creative options of using. We are close to a university, several universities-
Oh, right.
-that might be very useful for some of those students to, plus, we actually have some pretty whiz-bang computer students within our own, and so, I just would like us to use who we can.
So, I think, when we're thinking about something, that our taxpaying parents are, I'm not saying that they're not great, right? I just want, we're already going, we're doing something that we haven't done before. We might as well make sure that we invest, so that it's going to be working on day one. You know, a student, you know, doesn't have to call in and say, you know, it's 8:00 to 12:00, and that's my shift, but I don't feel like it today. But we need to make sure that there's coverage.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And on the, we have all the Chromebooks we're going to need for a one-to-one.
Thank you.
All right. So, board members, if you have burning questions, remember to send them.
And also, it's important to remember this model, and even if you don't accept this model, children will have teachers, and a lot of the questions will be answered. It may not really be a technical question as much as navigating the instructional software, or the learning management system, which is part of the professional development war for our teachers right now and moving forward.
Okay. Believe it or not, we're going to move off of action item 10.01 and move to action item 10.02. As stated, based on 10.01, we did endorse and approve the portion of the superintendent's plan with minor amendment regarding face coverings. We will be deferring for the whole return-to-school plan for action and further discussion next Tuesday, the 28th, beginning at 5:30. All right. Appointment of voting delegate and alternate delegate for the Virginia School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. Any volunteers?
Move to appoint Ms. Young.
Second.
All right. Any alternates? Anybody want to join for an alternate?
I'll serve as alternate.
I was getting ready to call your name.
All right.
I got your icon.
All right. Would you like to amend the motion for an alternate?
Absolutely. I would also like to move that Ms. Randall be the alternate.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for 10, still remaining 10.03 action item?
Move to approve 10.03.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I was really happy to see some clarification in the code of conduct to prohibit the hate symbols on our schools' property.
I wanted to thank Lisa Bothwell for all the work that she's done this year, and it's been really, we're really fortunate that she was able to transition, and being such a fantastic lawyer doing this work. So, I appreciate her. Thank you. And her husband, of course.
Who is the principal? Of AT Wright Middle School in the Rock Hill District. Thank you very much.
Knew that was coming.
You got it, but then ended, yeah. Well, guess what?
Shh, turn your microphone off.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have several information items. I'm going to just talk through a few of them, just so we can get started. The adoption of the resolution that's waiving certain requirements in several of these policies. I don't know if there are questions, and if there are, I would suggest that we send them into our clerk for circulation, unless there are any burning ones tonight about waiving some of the requirements. Any burning questions? If not, if one comes up, if you would send them to our clerk for circulation to everyone on the board. All right. Head Start Policy Council is coming due. Is there anybody who would like to volunteer? I do enjoy this, but I will say some with my work schedule, even though we do meet virtually. It's one of the most exciting ones, so I just want to see if there is somebody who would like to take on that role.
I would volunteer for that.
Okay. Awesome. I would not mind serving as the alternate to, oh, no.
I'll serve as the alternate.
All right. All right. Again, we will iron that out at the next meeting, but I have at least two volunteers.
Madam Chairman, is there any reason why we couldn't move that to action and vote on it, just so we don't have to put it on next time?
Sure.
We've got volunteers we need to-
Yeah, that sounds-
Strike while the iron is hot, before the iron, the nice-
All right. If I hear a motion, oh, look, we would have to move it to action.
Yeah, that's my move, to move it to action.
Second. All right. Any further discussion about moving this to action? Nope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a follow-on motion?
I move to approve 10.04, nominating Liza and Pam to serve on the Head Start Policy Council as member and alternate.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, you all will be starting in September. All right. Approval of the FY '22 Budget Development Calendar. I will ask, Dr. Warner, be brief, is there anything you would like to particularly point out on this particular item?
As I said, this budget calendar follows the Board of Supervisors.
I'm sorry. As I said, this budget calendar follows the Board of Supervisors. It aligns with their budget calendar. And as I said before, the only thing is that the documentation for the CIP plan has to be sent to the Board of Supervisors by the 17th, so it can be downloaded into their documentation. And it will be presented to the school board the 11th and the 25th for consideration, so that we can make sure that we prioritize, if we have any changes to it. But since all the documentation goes over to the Board of Supervisors, it doesn't matter what order it's in. So, everything else seems to align. I don't know if Chris has anything he wants to add to that. Mr. Fulmer, has anything he wants to add?
If I could just throw one out, and like I said, this is certainly just something for the FAB to kick around. Every year, I talk about that I would love for the Board of Supervisors and the school board to meet before we are in budget purgatory, that we would meet about the budget and our priorities in the fall. And I believe Dr. Kizner-
I think it's in there.
It is in there, okay.
I don't, I'm not sure. Do we have it? I thought it was in there for the fall.
Okay. I guess I saw that as CIP priorities, and maybe I missed it. Okay.
I thought that was mostly related to CIP. My thought was really on budget priorities. If I missed it, I apologize, it's too small. But for me to read here, and I might have missed it, but that's just a long-term goal of mine, is I would really love to have a joint session of our, both of our boards in like September, because other divisions do that, to talk about the school budget. But just a preference.
Also, the joint working group would be, I thought there was something they could handle, as long as we've kind of set our priorities. I thought it was, maybe the three-on-three committee would be able to address that. But I believe there is actually something in here, I just have to check.
Okay. Like I said, it's just been a long-term wish of mine to someday get there. We will bring that back at the next meeting. And let's see. Next one is about the insurance programs, liability insurance. Anybody have any burning questions there? If not, the next one is about the academic progress, the MAP growth assessment for students in grades three through eight. Any questions on that?
I was just wondering if this item and the next two items, if it would make sense, if it would be helpful to have those approved tonight, so that we can get that moving through.
Yeah.
I'm seeing nods, okay.
I was-
So, can I make a single motion, or do you want me to do each one individually?
Individually.
Is there any reason to look at 11:07 as well?
I left out the school buses, but I included what was 11, 05, 06, and 07.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, sorry, I only heard two.
Okay.
Dr. Kizner, it's contagious now, I'm not being able to hear. Okay, thank you, sorry.
So, I'm making a motion to move items 11:05, 11:06, 11:07 to action, to be considered for action, and they would then become 10:05, 10:06, and 10:07.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to move these three items to action. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so I'm just going to start with, I'd like to move to approve 11:05, the approval of an annual subscription for Northwest Evaluation Association Measures of Academic Progress Mathematics Growth Assessment for all students in grades three through eight.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? My only question is, is I assume this can be delivered in either a virtual or hybrid model, this assessment? Do this. Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to hear. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move to approve 10.06, approval of the purchase of wireless access points from DALL-E computers to increase capacity in seven schools. Second.
All right. It's been seconded. Any questions about this item?
Yes.
Ms. Young.
You know I'm on this, I'm on this bandwagon. So, this was pre-COVID, right? My question again, do we have sufficient-
Yeah, this is a long-term project. We do a few schools every year. This is the last of this round. It's an infrastructure, long-term infrastructure project.
Okay. So, even though it was long-term, I'm saying the same thing again, I'm sorry. This was pre-COVID, long-term plan. No changes have been made for any of the schools that we need, now that it's post and virtual and all that, we're good?
These are the last seven we need to upgrade.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve 10.07, approval to purchase for increased capacity of Kajit mobile internet access devices for students without broadband internet access.
There's already been a quick second there. Any discussion or questions about this item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. The next one is regarding the FY, the purchase of five mainstream school buses and five special needs school buses. Any questions on this one? Dr. Warner?
Yes, I was wondering, we had discussed the possibility of deferring some of these bus purchases to a later date in the light of COVID, and we don't know what our transportation needs are going to be. Would it be appropriate to just put this purchase on hold, or is there some reason that we should go forward with it?
I anticipated that question being asked, because we discussed it at the FAB meeting as a potential expenditure savings in the FY '21 budget. I left it on here mainly because the agenda was already probably halfway out the door by the time we finished that FAB meeting, and knowing it was only for information and I didn't even weren't taking action. And it kind of buys us a few weeks until the next board meeting, and to get a little bit more clarity.
Okay. So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, I was thinking the same thing, I had my FAB hat on, and it could go either way, right?
Mm-hmm.
It could be that we need it because we need to social distance. And we don't know how many people are going to change their mind and want to have face-to-face instruction, regardless of the risk. And so, for that reason, we would be needing them. But then on the other side, if we go virtual and get the numbers more on the virtual side, then we won't need them, and then we're able to have that cushion and have that money to use for other. So, just leaving it on here until, for a couple of weeks, is a great idea.
I want to state, is that I've seen a history here in my short time of things being delayed and never purchased. So, it's been budgeted, you have a three-R list, which is your best example. And these children, these programs, these buses are still going to be needed. So, it's your decision, but I would say if we need additional dollars, then we work with our Board of Supervisors to get the additional dollars. Because once you take it out of the budget, and I'm not sure you're exactly saying, you're saying delay, but sometimes when we delay, it ends up being, somehow disappears, and then we're still going to have the needs of these buses. We went through that process when we developed the operating budget. So, I just make that point.
And then, can I just say 11, well, previously, 11:09 and 11:10, which Dr. Warner and I added, I think we've taken care of 11:09. And then, 11:10, I would be perfectly happy to wait for that discussion until we've actually settled more-
for that discussion until we've actually settled more on a plan.
I appreciate that. If I could just comment on the 1109, this would be for Mr. Anderson, especially how we get out through our procurement folks or any of the other people, I'm sure if I'm looking at Mr. Fulmer because you happen to be here, to making sure that they too are aware of our policies for working in our buildings, especially on construction projects and others. So that was the only, we talked about it, but I also think we have, it's incumbent on us to make sure that anybody working in our, working in our buildings needs to know our policy.
And also, when you get to 1110, I'm going to need, that's my legal authority to make a determination, building have to close. So every superintendent does. I do it for snow days. I do it for bomb threats. I do it. So I did it in March. So I would like to get clarity because I'm surely not going to call a board meeting when I know I have to close the school. So, you know, I know, were you taking it off now for further, later discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Jay left and I forgot to ask him about Ms. Hollaback's song has 15% dial-up in the choir. So I was just wondering what the plan was for that. But I could defer, maybe send you an email about that. Dial-up. So, because she, no, that's not going to work. But we can talk about that later.
Well, speaking of that one, 11.11, or what used to be 11.11, is about the use of Stafford County Public School Buildings for Remote Learning Access. I know at least four of our districts have some challenges in that area. And so I just would like to make sure that, and Dr. Kizner and I have talked about that, like potentially next year, how do we help identify? Because sometimes people are afraid to ask. I can probably give you a map of my district where I can tell you go down this road and it's gone. But just making sure that we have that additional way to reach out to families. It's more how we're looking at that and then how we have our support for everybody. So, all right. Board members, any last? Other than that?
Oh, so long.
We are adjourned. We will be meeting next Tuesday at 5:30, place to be determined by noon tomorrow. Thank you very much.